Good evening, everyone. I'm Board Chairman Scott Lambert. And at this time, I would like to call to order the September 11, 2024 East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
... United States of America, through the Republic of America, one nation, through God, in the world, without change.
I'd like to introduce our attendees here at the table. On my immediate right is Vice Chairman Rich Orlo, and to his right is Supervisor Peter Fixler. On my immediate left is Solicitor Bernadette Kearney, and next to her is Township Manager Steve Brown. As I expect a lot of input from our staff and consultants tonight based on the agenda items, I'd like to introduce the rest of the team so you folks know who will be talking. Located in the front table to my left is Zach Barner, Director of Planning and Development. Next to Zach is Assistant Township Manager Catherine Ricardo, and then next to her is Zoning Officer John Matea. Table to my right, we have Chris Jaeger, Police Chief. Next to Chris is Donna Weichert, Head of Operations, and Assistant Solicitor Ron Taylor. And then finally seated in the audience is our Director of Public Works, John Neeld, Fire Officer, Chief Fire Officer Greg Lewis, and our Engineering Consultant Edward Van Arsdale. Is that butcher's name? Thank you for that. Just a couple other things I'd like to mention at this point in time, some meeting decorum points. The meeting is being recorded, and residents will have the opportunity to comment after each agenda item is discussed by the staff and the supervisors. And non-agenda items can be brought up during the public comment section number eight. When and if you wish to speak, please come to the mic, introduce yourself, and give your address. And because of the amount of activity we expect tonight, we're going to try to limit comments to three minutes or less. Today marks 23 years since the September 11, 2021 terror attacks that forever changed New York City and the nation. Nearly 3,000 people were killed when Al Qaeda hijackers crashed four jet liners into the Twin Towers, the Pentagon, and the field in southwest Pennsylvania we will never forget. Please stand and offer a moment of silence for those who lost their lives and the loved Moving on to board briefings. Executive sessions were held today on September 11 at 4:30 where we discussed personnel, legal, and real estate issues. Catherine, could you step in and have an overview of an upcoming referendum that is going to be on the ballot on November 5?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a brief update on our grant applications as well. We have several that are in the works right now, but I just wanted to provide the board and members of the audience with an update that we're at roughly $11.7 million in total awarded and pending grant funds for various township projects. And in addition to that, as you mentioned, the general election, which is going to be held on November 5, will feature a referendum for an open space initiative. And so we do have information on that on the township website. There's a frequently asked questions section. Should anyone have any specific questions, they're answered in pretty great detail there. The Board of Elections also recently posted the plain language version of the ballot measure, so that information's also available now and was just posted to our website today so you can access that information. And if the board has any other questions or members of the audience, I'd be happy to go over them in greater detail.
I guess, Catherine, one thing. The basis for this open space referendum probably begins many years ago with the concept that any open, clean land that existed in this township was being purchased by developers. And most of the time, there were residential homes being put on that, which can be a good thing or can be a bad thing. But we heard a lot of people complaining about the amount of growth that was occurring here in the township. And so to try to level the playing field and be more competitive against developers who have usually a larger pot of money than the township has, because remember, we need to be solvent, we've got to fund a lot of different projects, is that we decided that we were going to try to get an open space referendum for the funding source that would help us be more competitive with trying to acquire land for parks or whatever, open space scenario that we could come up with at this point in time. And also, the second driver of this has been the fact that there's a piece of property, Zach, if you're able to put up, where the owner had came to us about eight, nine months ago and wanted to donate through a purchase kind of convoluted way to go about doing it, but it was given to Westchester University and they were going to sell it to us. It's a sizable tract of 31.2 acres. It's currently called the Schiffer Property. It's off of Moorestein and Immaculata. That property is zoned R1. And we have applied for two grants. We've received one grant, and we're waiting on the second. But it came to light is that this was a sizable piece of property and a sizable cost. So open space referendum made sense to end up being looked at, and we felt as though it was the best thing that we could do here to help fund and purchase this property. If we fail on this, that will become a developer's delight, because again, it's zoned R2, R1. So the cost involved is not substantial in terms of perhaps some of the other townships that are around, and we're probably on the lower end, but we're probably in an average of $140 to $160 annualized cost of the tax to help fund open space. So we hope you look at the information that's on our website, and if you have any questions to reach out and ask us, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor. Okay, moving on. John Neeld, I guess you've got some, just a little bit of an update regarding the upcoming bulk trash pickup?
Yes, it's that time of year again for bulk trash. It's going to start on Tuesday, October 1, and run through the 4th on Friday, with drop off here if anybody wants to bring things in on Saturday from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The website has the list of acceptable and unacceptable items. We just want to reinforce a couple of the unacceptables. No TVs, computers, paint cans, tires, batteries, or anything you can throw in your regular trash. So very popular event, and we have four days. We'll hit every street in the township in the four days.
Okay. If it happens to be raining those days, do the people still put out items?
Yes, we ask everything to be out the first day, Tuesday at 7:00 a.m., and we will get there by Friday. We just don't know. It depends on the volume of material, rain or shine.
Okay. Thanks, John. Let me backtrack to 2B, or to 2C. Larry, do you have a park and rec update?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So August was a very busy month for parks recreation. We closed out our summer council series at Valley Creek Park with my best friend's girl, Karstie Ben, and that was extremely well attended. We ended the month of August with our summer movie night with Kung Fu Panda 4. Myself, Assistant Township Manager Catherine Ricardo manned the popcorn station and gave out merch to all of the people who came. Supervisor Peter Fixler came in, and it was a great night by all, very well attended as well. And I think this kind of just speaks to this desire from the community for these events to continue to grow. Which brings me to our next point. East Whiteland Township is hosting our first ever Community Day on Sunday, October 6, from 12 to 5 p.m. It's going to be at 55 Valley Stream Parkway, which is the site of the old Seamen's Building. And we're going to be featuring live music, food vendors, alcohol, games and activities for kids, giant Jenga, obstacle courses, vendors from the communities. And it's a free event, all are welcome, and I'm really excited about this, making this happen, working with the same production company that does our summer council series to bring in a wide variety of music for people of all ages. And I think this is a great time of the year to do something for the community, and I really am excited to bring this to the township.
Larry, is Rich or Peter going to be in the dunk tank for that event?
Do be determined, but we can make it happen. And finally, last but not least, we are partnering with the Melbourne Library and hosting a stargazing event at Baktin Hill Park, which will be on Saturday, September 21st. All registration is going through the library's website, so if you're interested in attending that stargazing event, please go onto the Melbourne Library's website and you can register there. Thank you.
Excuse me, Larry, this is Peter. Will there be any, I guess, experts helping with stargazing?
Yeah, we're partnering with the Chester County Astronomical Society, so we'll have experts on hand, we'll have telescopes set up, so you don't have to bring your own. There will be a limited number available, but you're people are more than welcome to register for the event because parking is limited. Come and hear what the experts have to say and take a look at the stars in one of our newest parks. A great location.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to 2E, F, and G, I'll hand over to Steve Brown, and he can give us an overview on those three items.
Thank you, Scott. The first item is to establish the 2025 budget public meeting dates of the Board of Supervisors. And these will be set for October 21, 2024, and October 28, 2024, both in this room, in person only, starting at noon. And we aim to end around 4 o'clock on those days. And we've been successful the last couple years in completing the board's review of the budget in two sessions, as is proposed here. Next item is to recognize two Eagle Scouts for their projects that benefited the East Whiteland Township Volunteer Fire Company. The first young man, his name is Jacob Diedrich, from Troop 78, which is the troop I'm still involved with. And Rich and his son Michael were also very active and members, and Michael's an Eagle Scout.
Yes.
Yes, as are my sons. And Nolan Schneider, who's from Troop 76, which is actually located in East Whiteland, Troop 78 is not, but pulls a lot from the Great Valley communities. I don't know if we have pictures to show of these two young men. That's Jacob. That's, I'm not quite sure what that is. Greg probably knows, but it's a training prop for firemen to practice on. And that is what Nolan built. I don't know Nolan, he's again in another troop, but that looks like he built half a house to me, and has quite a career in front of him in construction and engineering, if he wants. But Greg, go ahead, I see you got a...
Yeah, the first prop that you saw there was a wall breaching prop to teach us to get through drywall and studs. We can crawl through with an air pack on, a very useful prop. And the second prop was the Denver Drill Prop that lets us practice removing a down firefighter out of a window in a...
Yeah, so these are great projects. Most Eagle Scouts like to build benches in parks, so I was quite relieved to see two young men do something different that benefited our fire company. So thank you to Jacob and Nolan. And then the final item is a week I always look forward to this time of year, National Transportation Demand Management Week. Well, I'm kidding a little bit, but we're exaggerating. I do sit on what's called TMAC, which is the Transportation Management Association of Chester County. I do sit on that board, as have past township managers here, and it is a very active and positive organization in the county. And transportation demand management is what it is. It's really promoting a range of safe and reliable transportation options for all users. And this week is to create awareness amongst decision makers and the public about transportation demand management, and it's a time to share information about different types of transportation modes, and as well as methods to reduce the carbon footprint of transportation in our communities. So we'll be promoting it on our website and on our social media.
Any questions, public? Okay. Moving on to board motion and resolutions. Steve, you continue with 3A, please.
Yeah, I'm happy to announce, well, this is actually the ratification of the appointment of David Grady as the Finance Director. I think Dave is in the back. Yeah, there he is. He's hiding in the back. Dave comes to us very well qualified from another Providence Township where he served as Township Manager, acted as Finance Director as necessary, and prior to that was the Assistant Township Manager. Dave is also a CPA, and we're very happy to have Dave aboard.
So Peter, would you like to make a motion to ratify David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appoint David Grady as the Finance Director of East Whiteland Township.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and passes.
Welcome.
Greg, I'll turn things over to you for the next two items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Supervisors. As you're all aware, last couple months, we had a full-time vacancy within the Department of Fire and Emergency Services. So we did a post for the open positions, as well as the open part-time positions. We had over 40 applicants that applied for the open positions. After we vetted the resumes, we narrowed down the pool of 20 candidates. We held a written and physical agility test that consisted of 20 candidates in the end of July. We had all 20 candidates pass the physical agility portion, and we had 14 of the 20 pass the written. After that, myself, the three shift captains, in conjunction with Human Resources, conducted panel interviews, and I'm happy, I would like to make, ratify the appointment of Vincent Lanny to the full-time position. To background on Vincent, he comes to us from PSEG Nuclear in New Jersey, where he served as Battalion Chief, and he is currently a volunteer firefighter at Darby Fire Company, which he currently serves as the volunteer fire chief for the past six years. Vincent is signed to the B shift under the direction of Captain Rachko. Vincent is joined tonight by his wife Megan, son Gabriel, his parents Karen and Dan, his brothers Dan, Pat, and Frank, and his sister-in-law Maria. Yes, I just want to take some pictures.
So why don't we officially make it, and make a motion to ratify the appointment? Then we can officially get pictures.
I'll make a motion to ratify the appointment of Vincent Lanny to full-time firefighter EMT.
I second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're ratified. Congratulations.
He was over behind you, I can't even see.
George, guys, turn them...
Yes. Huh? It looked good. I'll send you some pictures.
Also, I'd like the Board of Supervisors to ratify the appointment of Kevin Skimba and Michael Kofalka to part-time firefighter EMTs. Kevin Skimba was a 15-plus-year volunteer at East Whiteland Volunteer Fire Company, where he currently held the rank of Battalion Chief. He currently works full-time as a police officer with Westchester University and is a part-time firefighter EMT with the Paoli Fire Company. And Michael Kofalka is a full-time firefighter in the city of Philadelphia on a ladder.
There you go. Yeah, I'll make a motion to ratify the appointment of Kevin Skimba and Michael Kofalka to part-time firefighter EMTs.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and is also ratified. It's your turn now, Chris. And you're not selling a car.
The Police Department has been busy as well in the hiring process. We went through an extensive process, again, to hire, and we came down to these two applicants. The first is Zachary Pfeifer. He was a previous employee here before as a part-time officer, and he kept trying to come back, and this time he succeeded. So we were happy to have him back. Like I said, it was an extensive process, so he proved that he wanted the job and he's worthy. After graduating high school, Zachary attended, he went to Great Valley High School, graduated and he attended, graduated from Montgomery County Community College Municipal Police Academy in 2016. He's been in law enforcement for seven years, and worked part-time in East Whiteland Township from 2017 to 2019. In 2020, he graduated from Rosemont College with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. And Zachary's in attendance with his parents Andrew and Kathy Pfeifer and his fiancee Katie. Everyone just... Secondly, we have Amelissa Trujillo, the 23-year-old Norristown area high school graduate where her interest in law enforcement began. Her junior year of high school, she joined an Army National Guard as a military police officer, which is an accomplishment for somebody in 11th grade to go to the Army. While in the service, she got the opportunity to work in corrections and receive police training. This is what gave her the idea of enhancing her skills to help pursue a civilian career as a municipal police officer. She continued studying criminal justice online at Montgomery County Community College and later put herself through the police academy. In June of '23, she graduated and began looking for jobs that we found. Now that she's at East Whiteland Township, she hopes to learn and develop skills to not only use in this community, but also develop her into a better person. So congratulations, back, Amelita.
Want to ratify?
Yes, I'd like to ratify that by making a motion of the appointment of Kevin Skimba, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, read the wrong line, excuse me, the appointment of Officer Trujillo and Officer Pfeifer to the East Whiteland Police Department.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Congratulations. We'll get more pictures. Peter, go ahead and go down.
Sure.
It's all good. Let's get George.
So we'll let the room clear out a little bit here. So, we'll let the room clear out a little bit here.
Thank you again. In late 2023, we had a horrific crash on Route 202 that started by a wrong-way driver, traveling the wrong direction on Route 202. Our, our brand of rescue equipment that we used is Hearst. So, what they do is a Hearst Green Cross Award. So, I'd like to recognize the crew from Rescue Five that night. The crew pulled up, had a horrific accident. We had, unfortunately, two victims had succumbed to their injuries, and we had four people trapped in the vehicles. So, they were able to use the Hearst Drawls of Life equipment to remove the remaining victims and get them to definitive care at Paoli Hospital Center. So, it was an unfortunate event for those that unfortunately succumbed to their injuries, but we were able to save numerous lives that night by the heroic actions of the crew of Rescue Five and one member from Malvern Fire Company. So, I'll call them up one by one, I'd like to recognize each one of them. Captain Lauren Napsinger. Firefighter EMT Brian Gathercole. And the one member from Malvern Fire Company that's not with us tonight, but firefighter EMT Everett Carpenter.
Thank you, gentlemen, for everything you did that night. I vividly remember that night because I was coming back from playing golf, and I was 45 minutes before that accident, heading north on 202, and it just hit home what occurred and what happened, so. Moving on to 3F, I guess we'll bring in Larry on the Zoom to talk about another Eagle Scout candidate project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. East Whiteland is excited to continue our partnership with Scout Troop 78 from Willistown. And coming to us today is Ethan Sansone from the troop. He approached us, County Manager Steve Brown, earlier in the summertime, and he puts in contact with myself and Public Works Director John Neal to discuss potential Eagle Scout projects. After some discussion, we landed on some work to be done at Birch Road Park. Ethan presented his project last month to the Parks and Rec Board, and cones with the full recommendation of the Parks and Rec Board, and he's here, he's here tonight to present his project to the board supervisors. So, Ethan, you can take it away.
Yeah, actually, let me, let me speak real briefly. I know I made a joke earlier about projects, so, and I don't want to steal Ethan's thunder, but I'll say what he's got to present to you is sorely needed in this particular park.
Thank you, Mr. Brown and Larry. You guys have been a big help, and Mr. Neal as well, thank you very much. The whole Township Parks and Rec staff has been very, very helpful from the very beginning, and you guys have a really exceptional group of people here who help keep your parks in top shape. So, my project will be at Birch Road Park, or hopefully be at Birch Road Park, as you guys can see. And we're going to call it the Birch Road Park Revitalization Project. That was, as I said, at the Parks and Rec meeting, all 10 years of my English education going into that one word, revitalization. I'm very proud of it. Next, please. So, first, I'm Ethan Sansone. Hi, everybody. I'm a sophomore at Great Valley High School, just down the road. I actually drive by here every day, and I had no idea. So, this is a new experience for me. I play baseball for a couple of different organizations, and I am a life scout and patrol leader in Willistown Troop 78. Next, please. Hopefully, I'm an Eagle Scout. That would be the, the goal at the end of this process. For those of you who don't know, the Eagle Scout, you can see the pictures of the guys who did the work for the fire company. You do have to complete a large service project to your community to, to earn the rank of Eagle Scout, which is the final rank in the Scouts BSA program of Boy Scouts of America. Next, please. So, your pros plan, which is written up, and Mr. Brown was, was kind enough to send it to me. After looking through it, we can see that the pros, pros plan highlighted a few needs in Birch Road Park. First off, there was, there was seating, so there's pretty much no seating, except for two picnic tables in the center of the park, so hopefully, we're going to improve that. And maybe if we make the benches good enough, we will improve Mr. Brown's attitude about building benches in parks. So.
I, I should never open my big mouth, and you made me eat my words, and I deserve, I deserve that, Ethan.
These will be the highest-quality benches you'll ever see. So, aside from the benches, we are going to add some trees for shade, because if you guys can see, well, you'll see on the next few slides and in your, in little booklets there, that there is pretty much no shade in the entire park, except for two lines of trees on either side. Now, this, this is about like a one, what, one acre, the whole park? So, it's, it's not a very large area, but there is a noticeable lack of shade, except for the two rows of pine trees that go down either side, perpendicular to the roadway. And then, we also wanted to beautify the park's entrance, that was also mentioned in the pros plan, always something that, that can make the park a lot nicer, a lot more welcoming. Next, please. So, we are going to solve these problems with six trees, two eastern red buds, all of these are native, by the way, two eastern red buds, and four red maples. I know the, the word red would imply that they're, they're red, that they do actually get a nice fiery red color in the fall, but they will be a nice normal green for the rest of the year, so they won't stand out too much. But they will add a pop of color to the park in the fall, which I think is something that could definitely be added. And then we have five small two-person benches. If you guys have been to Valley Creek Park, or any of you guys, actually, Valley Creek Park or Battle of the Clouds Park, there were actually two other Eagle Scout projects from the same troop. I actually know the guys very well who did it. They actually built very, very similar benches, and in one case, the same benches, I think. And, and you guys can see and get a feel for what those benches are like if you've been there. Next, please. So, the benches. As you can see, they're, they're of very fine quality, Mr. Brown. And, and you can see the, the placement up there on the map of the park. So, we're, we're going for five right now. We don't want to put too much, because it's, it's a very small park, and we don't want to just, we don't want to make it like 100% benches, that, that wouldn't be great. You, you notice that up in the top there is the pico right-of-way, which we'll, we'll get to in a minute, but that does prevent us from putting any benches there, planting any trees, so that's something that we're going to avoid with all of that. And you can see on, on the left and the right there of that map, you have the, a long line of, of evergreens that, that go down on the other side of the park, and then the road is at the very bottom of your map there. And next, please. So, the trees, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to have two red buds for beautification of the entrance. That's a picture of them on the right. That, I think it's a very cool-looking tree, I think it'll add a lot to the park, and I hope you guys think so as well. That'll be in the front of the park. Now, we are aware of some potential developments in that park later on, some more significant, less 15-year-old-guy-style project, that will be a, a large gazebo in the center of the park. So, we're, we're going to steer clear of any area that might cause a problem with, with that project in the future. And then we have the four red maples for shade, and you'll see the placement on the next slide. Placement. So, just beneath the basketball court, obviously, we can't plant any in the pico right-of-way, so we're, we're dodging that. That begins right on the other side of the basketball court, so we can't go anywhere near there. So, as you can see, we have two trees planted to the, the north, that, that's the north, looking at that map, of the, of the basketball court, and then we have two by the, the small swing set in the bottom right. And then we have the, the two red buds in the very front of the park, again, steering clear of the center for that potential gazebo or some other large project in the future. Next, please. So, the estimated cost for all of this, as you can see, some significant costs on there, apart from, you know, deck screws, which is something you'd expect. We have the prime ground contact pressure-treated lumber, that is, that is top-notch lumber, that is not going anywhere. I know the, the benches are in, as I said, the, the other two parks, and they haven't shown any signs whatsoever of, of going anywhere. They're solid benches, and they're made of really, really high-quality wood. So, as long as we can continue that, we anticipate rot not being a problem for, for the foreseeable future. And then we also have the, the red maples and the red buds. Now, we are going with a larger style of tree, so they can provide shade immediately and be able to be a little bit more established early, as opposed to a small sapling, which has a lot of risks. It could be stepped on, it could be trampled, if we went really small, and it, it won't provide the shade that we're looking for immediately, or in the next five years or so. Next, please. So, from your Parks and Rec Board, they, they had a few of the following comments, concerns, whatever you want to call them, regarding the projects, so these are the top four here, the, the only four, but the first one is, is the leaves from the trees blowing on neighboring lots. So, I don't know if you got, if we want to go all the way back to the map, but from the, yeah, thank you, from the, the, the wind is, is from right to left on that map, so that will blow the, the leaves right into the, the long row of evergreens, and trust me, that's, it's a thick row of trees there, so there's no leaves getting through to the neighbor on the adjacent lot. And if, if it were to blow towards the, the top of, of the map there, that would be, as I said, in the pico right-of-way, which is not something we really care about, because that's, that's also township property, so that doesn't matter very much. But the, the prevailing winds are from right to left there. All the way back down. So, the long-term durability of the lumber was another thing that was mentioned. I did kind of address that. It's, it's solid lumber, it's, it's not going to go anywhere for at least 10 years. Ground contact, it's, it's the real deal. The warranty on trees, unfortunately, they do not, Site One, which is the landscape company we've used in the past, I, your, your township has used in the past, they do not offer warranty on their trees, but we, we're going to make sure they work. I'm not just going to get all the signatures for this and then walk away and be like, okay, well, let's let the trees die now, I don't really care, I'm, I'm not that kind of guy, so I don't, I don't want to do that to, to this park and to this community. So, we'll make sure that the trees, we'll, we'll look after them for, for a while in the future to make sure they get well-established. But the trees, they can grow, they were especially selected, they're native, they like a lot of sun, and they can grow pretty much anywhere, so they're, they're hardy trees, and I don't think that'll be much of a problem either. We also were looking to work out a agreement potentially with neighbors to ensure that they get watered, so I don't know if anybody leaves in the, the Birch Road area who would be interested in, in helping out with that. You don't have to reach out now, just when we, when we put the trees in, to ensure that they remain watered. And then, number four would be the benches being taken, so you'd expect that to be an issue, but, well, you know, somewhat prevalent, but as we can see with the other parks, I believe none of them, right, Mr. Neal? None of them.
Ethan, I don't know if you know it, but John, John is, is installed on those, those device, GPS devices on those other ones, so if someone decides to take it, we'll, we'll be able to find it. So, hopefully, hopefully, he gave you four or five extra ones for your project.
Oh, yeah, well, we'll have them secured in no time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we got it. So, other than that, the benches are supposed to be small and mobile, but not like, you know, pick it up and, and, and put it in the back of your truck mobile, they're more like two people taking it and carrying it to where they want to go, to where we want to place it in the park. It's not, we're not talking like really, really mobile. And then obviously, the project was recommended for approval by the Parks and Rec Board unanimously, although I'm told that's, that's not exactly a rarity. Next, please. So, before we do open up to any questions, I do want to thank again all the guys from your Parks and Rec Department, as well as Mr. Brown. Clearly, you're pretty experienced with Eagle Scouts and Eagle Scout projects, as I can see. I had no idea those two guys did it for, for this township as well. I know you had two additional ones last year, so you're, you're pretty much pros in this area, and I'm, I'm kind of the newbie here, so I'm open to any advice you guys might have throughout this process, and thanks again to all the guys in, in the Parks and Rec Department and the public works. So, any questions?
I have a quick question for you, Ethan. I commend you on your project, and I ask you, I don't think you have a date for planting trees, but when you do, please reach out to me, I'd love to help out plant the trees.
That'll be very helpful, thank you.
In case, in case you don't know it, Peter is an arborist.
Oh, that, that'll be very helpful. See, see what I mean, you guys have, have all the experience here, you know what you're doing. Any, any other questions?
I, I agree with, I, what Peter's saying. Thank you for this project and for the effort, and, and your humorous presentation tonight was well.
Didn't want to bore you guys.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, having a son who's an Eagle, I know exactly what he went through, and your father probably went through too. So, good luck to you.
Thank you. So, would you like to approve it?
Yeah, thank you, Ethan, that was a great presentation, and it, again, despite my joking, will be a great project for this park, so thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, so moving on to 3G.
Make a motion.
Wait. Do you need to make a motion?
You have to make a motion to approve it.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Ethan Sansone's Eagle Scout project to revitalize Birch Road Park.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes?
We move on to 3G, and would you like to make a motion for that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to hire and appoint counsel, the Council of Sienna Law, to represent the interests of the township ordinance as part of the conditional use proceedings.
I second that motion.
And before we go any further, because we do have to open it up to the motions for a public comment, I do want to make a comment before, I see Mr. Lewis is standing up. This motion to hire as part of the conditional use proceedings is, does not mean, there are three ways this could go. It could be in opposition, Sienna Law could come out in opposition of the conditional use hearing, Sienna Law could decide they're not going to do anything, they have to, because they have to review all the materials, or Sienna Law could decide they want certain conditions. So, this is, which is why it is worded the way it's worded, to hire and appoint counsel to represent the interests of the township ordinance. So, there's a couple way, three ways I view it as it could go. And I think Mr. Lewis, who represents the applicant, because Mr. Brosman, as you recall from the last meeting, had, was conflicted out tonight, so Mr. Lewis from his office is here present on behalf of Mr. Brosman.
Thanks, Bernadette. Yes, Rob Lewis from Kaplan Stewart, George Brosman, unfortunately, could not be here. And we wanted the opportunity before the Board formally took action on that motion, if we could, do one of two things. Either tonight, we do have some additional testimony in response to kind of the culmination of the proceedings last month, some that we think is vital to the Board's consideration, and whether or not actually you believe it appropriate to hire Sienna Law, or at least allow Matt to come up and make a very brief presentation more specific to this motion. Either way, I'm just not sure which the Board would prefer. What Matt is going to present now would likely otherwise be part of our testimony, but at the very least, we'd like Matt to be able to speak to the motion and our thoughts on what you're proposing to do at this, that acceptable? And if I, and if so, may I bring the lecturn over for him, so. It'll, it, it will. So, it will limit it to a few minutes. We will not overburden you in time.
So, what Mr. Lewis is suggesting is we can move the motion to after the conditional use hearing, because it sounds like the applicant is going to, whether he makes his presentation now or he's going to make it during the hearing.
Correct.
Yeah. So, it's at the board's pleasure. I'm okay with either having the motion continue now or waiting till after the conditional use hearing is closed.
Would item H also be moved to after the public hearing?
Is that the intent, Rob?
Sure. I mean, we would just, our goal is to have the board listen to the additional testimony and look at the revised plans that we intend to submit as exhibits tonight before taking action on these two motions. We think that we can hopefully make a difference by making that presentation.
Do it now. Get it over with.
The first one or both of them?
Both.
Or, okay, and Rich, I see you want to say something.
Sure. So, we move both motions to after the hearing. Have the hearing with what he's going to testify to and then handle the motions.
We can do that. We can have the conditional. We can move both these motions to after the hearing. But it has to be after the hearing. It can't be part of the hearing, after the hearing. That is okay. It sounds like the same presentation will be made during the hearing that your applicant's going to make now.
So, we can listen to it once?
Once is what I'm getting at. Yes.
I vote for once.
I'm okay with it. Right, listening to it once. Moving the motions to after, both motions to after the hearing.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay. So, what we'll do is we'll move both motions to after the public hearing.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Brings us to, then, the continued conditional use hearing. Yes.
So, at this point in time, I'll turn over. So, item four to the public hearings to Bernadette.
And well, Mr. Lewis is getting the lectern. There are some, Tim, you okay? There are some housekeeping items. We do have several parties. I think some of them are in the audience. I'm just going to, and forgive me, because we didn't get a transcript, so my handwriting is not the best. But Glenn Cochrane or Kosherin?
Cochrane.
Cochrane. And then, I have Jeff Oler? Also present? Okay. Gary DePaul? Is Gary here? No? Okay. Then, this was Al Hoons, who I believe was here last time on behalf of Sean Ryan? No? And then, finally, Mr. Rabino. Those were all the parties that I had on my list. Oh, well, let me, before we get started, let me just explain a couple things. So, Mr. Lewis, just to review what the exhibits were. I spoke to Mr. Brosman, and I think you were on these emails. The exhibit, your exhibit A7 was not part of the exhibits at this point. So, exhibit A7, but he, Mr. Brosman had put in an exhibit A8, which was a plan related to stormwater. He did provide that the day after the last hearing. So, I have A8. So, we pick up with you with A9, recognizing that A7 may never be.
Correct.
Okay. And then, this afternoon, I sent to both you, and I think Mr. Brosman also, and to the board, T18, which was Mr. Comida's most recent review letter.
I do understand that Mr. Brosman has received it. I did not yet have an opportunity to review it, but I don't think I need to before proceeding.
Okay. So, those are those items. I also wanted to bring to the attention of both the board and Mr. Lewis that Mr. Barner had sent an email late today. I'm trying to find it. From a neighbor at Eric Koper at 23 Carroll Lane, indicating to the board that he's against any housing or apartment development at this property that's the subject of the application. What I normally tell the board is I do not mark these as exhibits. Since you received it, I gave it to a counsel to also have received it. Unless Mr. Koper is here, I just note it for the record. Since you received it, I let Mr. Lewis know that you received it. And he doesn't have the opportunity to question or cross-examine Mr. Koper, so we do not mark it as an exhibit. So, just wanted that noted for the record.
That procedure is acceptable to us. We appreciate that.
And then, I, there was a gentleman in the audience who was, I think he wanted to ask a question or ask for party status. Okay, you have to come up and speak into the microphone? Because there are people online who can't hear you.
Okay, I understand.
And I'm sorry, your name, sir?
Thomas Kees, K-E-Y-E-S.
K-E-Y-E-S. And Mr. Kees, where do you live?
Where I live is 1312 South Tulup Drive, Westchester.
And are you near this property?
No, I own property near it.
Okay, what's the property that you own?
It's on 447, 449, 451, 453, 455, 457 Lancaster Avenue.
And did, I'm sorry.
In Fraser.
And did you receive notice of the hearing?
My sister did.
The first hearing?
No, no, we did not hear anything about it.
Okay. So, you didn't receive notice in the mail from the township?
No.
How far away are you from the property?
A quarter mile.
Okay. So, normally, if you receive notice from, in reference to the hearing, and the first hearing was last month, you're within a certain distance, the board usually grants you party status. Mr. Lewis has the right to cross-examine you and object to your party status. That's why I was asking where you live. Go ahead, Mr. Lewis.
Can't very well cross-examine my own former client. Mr. Kees has been represented in the past by Mr. Brosman. I affirm in relation to the property that he is speaking to. So, we know of his proximity. We know what use is being put to that. We don't have any objection to him taking party status. He's in close proximity.
Okay. Does the board have any objection to party status, since Mr. Lewis does not?
I do not.
Okay, so I will add you to the list.
Okay, thank you.
I think those were the housekeeping items.
Great, thank you. And I know you've already had a long agenda, and I will do my best to move forward as quickly as I can. For the record, Rob Lewis from Kaplan Stewart, representing Pencrest Properties LLC, the applicant in this matter and owner of the property, 370 Lancaster Avenue. At the board's prior meeting on August 14th, my partner, George Brosman, began to present our case in chief, and at that time, presented testimony of the principal of Pencrest, Matt Lombardi, who's to my right, as well as our engineer, Chuck Dobson from Inland Design, and brief testimony from Sue Phillips, our traffic engineer. During that testimony, and then, again, towards the end of testimony, really after the culmination of what we had presented, we were asked to take a further look into some of the existing trees on the site. And in particular, our attention was to be drawn to two large sycamore trees, really to specifically identify their location and whether or not they could be incorporated into our proposal or remain with our proposal. We intend to present Mr. Lombardi this evening momentarily to discuss what has transpired in the last month, the efforts that we have put forth in trying to respond to those inquiries. And you will also see through evidence and exhibits this evening in support of the conditional use application, what we have, in fact, done to amend our plans and do our best to be responsive, again, to township's comments and concerns, which I believe is really kind of the MO of this project. This project, as you know, has been going on for over six years in terms of responding to comments and concerns and modifying the plan accordingly. But very quickly, Mr. Kees obviously was not here, but to really quickly reset the table, you recall the property being in the FC, Frontage Commercial District, which is one of the township's mixed-use zoning districts. Property is also designated as a Class I Historic Resource, containing remnants of a farm known as the Benjamin Hibbert Farm, containing the barn that is obviously the focal point, as well as some ruins to the rear of the property. We are seeking conditional use approval in accordance with Section 200-58.0J for proposed residences as part of the adaptive reuse of a historical resource in the mixed-use district. The applicant has been working to prepare and refine the plan, as I mentioned, for several years, and I believe has been very responsive to various comments and concerns, whether that be from the Historical Commission, Planning Commission, township staff, and your professionals. As I mentioned at the outset, this matter has been continued from the August 14th meeting to allow time for us to examine those two large sycamore trees that were of particular interest to Supervisor Lambert. Although this project will obviously require land development and approval, and it's the Township Subdivision and Land Development Ordinance that would require a landscaping plan and us to further endeavor into tree replacement compliance, we were asked, obviously, at this stage, to examine those trees and to see if there was any way that we could revise our conditional use plan to incorporate those trees. I'm noting that simply because anytime there is an issue that is more for land development during the conditional use phase, I do want to address it, that we are trying to be cooperative, again, trying to be responsive, even though it may not play, does not play directly into the criteria or standards for conditional use. But again, it's in that spirit of cooperation. This evening, I do intend to call three witnesses. Each of them will be very brief, or brief, maybe not very brief. We intend to recall Mr. Lombardi. I intend to call Megan Shomper, our arborist, and then, recall Mr. Chuck Dobson, our civil engineer, for some very brief follow-up. So, unless there's any initial questions for me, I think I should get right to it and have Mr. Lombardi testify. Excellent. Mr. Lombardi, I was going to say... I assume the board is, remains familiar with Mr. Lombardi. I can just get right into it. Excellent. Mr. Lombardi, based on Supervisor Lambert's concerns about two large sycamore trees on the property, did you instruct your project design team to go out to the property again and to confirm the location of those trees and examine whether it would be feasible to avoid their removal during the construction process?
We did. We hired an arborist, went to the site. I met her over one, two, three, or four times since the August 14th meeting. I know it was a little bit of a tough month. I'll be glad to get around to it a little bit. But our best to identify what's on the site.
And I'm going to make sure I have marked as A9. Are you familiar with A9?
Yes.
And is A9 an updated rendering of the plan of the site?
Yes, it is.
And I know Mr. Dobson will, his testimony as well, but am I correct that there's a matching set of civil engineer drawings?
Yes, correct.
And can you describe generally for the board, one, what we found with respect to those two trees and how that has affected or caused you to be modify the...
Sure. Last time we were here, Chairman Lambert pointed out that there were two trees that he thought were of significant value on the property. I wasn't overly familiar with the exact location of the trees, so we agreed that we could go back to the drawing board, table the meeting from last month, go back to site, hire an arborist, and try to find out more information on the location of these large trees on site. After plotting them, we realized that the two trees, one of them sits in a really rough spot with our design, which is kind of right in the middle of the building where the landscaping and the grading would have to all change. And we realized one of them was very close to the corner, the top right corner, the northeast, the northeast corner of the building. At that point, we determined the tree is very close to the edge of the building. If we are realistic and we can go back to the drawing board and scale the building back enough, measure the drip line, the canopy of the tree, we could curtail that part of the building so that we could save that one tree and continue forward with the project.
Also, then, work hand-in-hand with architect with...
We did. There's a lot of back and forth. I called the engineer, I swear, like seven o'clock in the morning. She thinks I'm insane, but we, hours and dozens, I mean, every day, it's 20 emails between all of us and back and forth. And we confirmed everything with the architect and how that's going to affect the building. We lose two parking spaces and a little bit of space within the first level. We were okay with that. And we think it's worth saving. This tree is prominent. It's in the front of the property. Right now, you don't even see it, because it's surrounded by so much underbrush and kind of crap around it, overgrowth. But it is a beautiful tree when you get up close and you can appreciate it.
Pat, as a result of... Has the current proposal for the apartment residence, the number of units or the mix of units?
Yes. In addition to taking out, I think this took out something like three or 350 square feet per floor, so maybe we lost about 1,000 square feet. But the small impervious we picked up wasn't necessarily for the density. One of the concerns last time was the density of the board, and we stressed that we really are getting down to critical mass as far as making the development feasible at this point with the unit count. So, we did subtract three units from the development. So, we went from 58 down to 55. And I want to speak later on, I have a little more of a presentation and some renderings and some architectural drawings showing the process over six years, where we begin and after each meeting, kind of where we got to, to reflect, not just saying, hey, we've reduced the units a lot, but actually show you architectural drawings, schematics over that time period to support really where we're at at this point.
From each floors, will likely affect how many bedrooms?
Yeah, that's correct. That corner of the building was supposed to be three two-bedrooms, and that became three one-bedrooms. So, you lost a bedroom in each of those three units.
And I think, as you pointed out last month, final mix. Not been determined that has...
Yeah, correct. And we don't think it would change a lot, maybe just a handful in either direction once they would finalize the construction documents. The more conceptual square footage plans at this point, there's an A and a B, which lays out the square footage of those ones in two bedrooms.
Other than the loss of some of the square footage and the change on exhibit nine, would this affect those architecture and those concepts? Would it in any way affect that exterior motif or the architecture?
Not a whole lot. That front corner kind of had a significant protrusion. And by notching out the rectangle that we did in the building, it would kind of recess that protrusion. So, there's still a little bit of a 3D dynamic there. But if you stood far enough back, it would almost look like the same. It would just be a little bit of an elevation, a sight distance change.
With the overall architectural motif and the connection to the barn, all of that?
Correct. That's remained the same.
And at the last hearing, testified how you had all the size of the building. One more modest action called unit count. Wanted an opportunity process of... Try, how we got to filing this. ...powerpoint. You can walk the board.
Thank you. We sent this PowerPoint over to Zach earlier just to talk about the overall zone here and the property and the process over the past several years. So, I'll try to go through this pretty quick. There's 20 slides, but it's the presentation of the Hibbert Farm property. This is the East Whiteland Township Route 30 Corridor Reexamination Study, which was 2017, and we're going to show the evolution of the plans for 370 Lancaster Ave., property-zoned Frontage Commercial, which is a mixed-use district, and a Class I Historic Resource property, formerly the Benjamin Hibbert Farm. So if you look here, you can see there's the site, kind of shaped like an upside-down T, just over three acres. So, the Route 30 Corridor Reexamination Study. Now, all this information that I'm reading to you tonight, Zach, if you could just, I'll be a little, there we go. All of the words and language you're seeing here is taken right off of the reexamination study and the master plan. I just quoted everything. So, dissected it and quoted it for purposes of this meeting tonight. So this is all residential and community feedback. None of these words are my own words. In response to what's currently on site, people referred to the Route 30 Corridor in East Whiteland as unattractive and disjointed. They say, "This busy and important roadway struggles to present an attractive and positive image of the township and its residents. Revitalize and realize the true potential of a lively, mixed-use, and pedestrian-friendly corridor." They wanted to see things like bike lanes, train station, nightlife, local businesses, and sidewalks. They do not want to see vacant and rundown. They don't want to see overhead power lines, which we would have all underground. They don't want to see sign clutter or big-box retailers. Next slide there, Zach. "Some expressions of future visions from the Route 30 study. Route 30 through Fraser is beautiful. I feel really safe walking and biking on Route 30, and it's so easy to get to and from the Chester Valley Trail. I moved to my apartment on Route 30 because there were so many shops, restaurants, and other amenities right outside my door. On Saturdays, I head to Route 30 to grab a cup of coffee and stroll between shops. I'm so glad they restored that historic barn on Route 30 instead of tearing it down." Slide number four, please. "Redevelopment recommendations per study. Promote reinvestment in the historic corridor, including infill and redevelopment of underutilized or abandoned properties, facade improvements, and an enhanced street scape. Encourage the development of mixed-use areas along the corridor that meet the increasing demand for safe, convenient, and lively neighborhoods where residents can live, work, shop, dine, and get fit close to home." Again, these are all quotes taken from residents and community members at the 2017 reexamination meetings. "Save the barn. Examine the adaptive reuse standards to ensure maximum flexibility in order to encourage the continued vitality of existing historic structures along the corridor. Provide incentives for private and public partnership and the provision of public green spaces and gathering areas along the corridor." Slide 6. "Promote flexibility to preserve historic structures through expansive zoning. The township has an existing historic preservation ordinance that promotes such reuse and encourages flexibility of permitted uses in order to increase the viability of potential projects along this corridor." Slide 7. "The dairy barn concept comes to town. In the examination, they refer to encouraging outdoor dining within view of the corridor. The character along Route 30 is envisioned to be a vibrant, yet cohesive mix of small and large businesses, mixed-use villages, and key intersections, diverse housing opportunities, and a physical community center for the Slide 8. But here, we're going to get into concepts that we started. This is going back to June of 2018. Zach and I, that's kind of when we began our relationship, and I know he was new to the township at the time, and we were kind of going through all these exciting changes, and I was following all the community, the meetings, and all the openness of the community trying to understand what the best use of Route 30 could be. This was a firsthand sketch of 84 units done by our architect. This was the previous architecture firm we had. This is six years ago. The first concept was not showing the barn. This is just a rough-hand sketch on the left. That has 80 units in it. We realized the barn had to be saved, and that wasn't a realistic sketch, so we went ahead and sketch number two right next to it. Shows 84 units. That's what's an expanded barn and multifamily housing in the back. A little bit further down the road, we thought, we were told after a subcommittee meeting, well, maybe the barn sits in a bad spot for this zone. So, looking into the current zoning, that barn sits too far back for the zone. You couldn't build that barn in the current location it's at. It would have to be much closer to the street. They want frontage in the frontage commercial zone. So, we actually called Wolf House Movers. They came, they assessed the barn, and they said, "There's not much more than pigeon poop holding this thing together. There's a chance if we go to move it, you're going to end up with a pile of rubble." So, moving the barn was not a concept. However, we did pay the architect to do a sketch of a, if we moved the barn to the back, we made it something like a clubhouse or something like that. So this would be more of like a frontage building. This was 98 units. I think this was 2019, maybe. Design continues. This is 92 units. This is saving the barn. We have three stories of residential, and this is expanded retail on the first floor. Slide number 11, please, Zach. This is the same reworked plan. It shows a little more retail in the front, shows structured parking, and four stories. That's for 85 total units. Again, all these concepts are after feedback from different boards within the township. So, you know, and we also had COVID in the middle of this. I had three daughters in the past six years, which is not an easy feat for anybody. Lots happened to everyone's life in the past six years, so I don't think we've really skipped a beat, but every time you'd make a revision with the architect, that's a site change, you know, it takes three, four months, and you have to plot it, and we all get together and talk about the issues with it. So, this stuff all takes forever. But, you know, we've really been working on this, and Zach could tell you, realistically, pretty often and straightforward for the past six, seven years. The next, at one point, we were told, maybe expand the frontage. Your frontage is limited on Lancaster Ave. You should try to get more frontage. Negotiating with the neighbor, trying to get that, we got very close to negotiating with the neighbor to buy the property. That presented 87 units, and we were up to 11,000 square feet of retail. We were creating a whole mixed-use kind of setup here. This shows the overview of that. Now, when that concept, before we went to the next subcommittee meeting or had some feedback, Zach, if you can get to that next slide, that shows the facade. Pretty building, large building, that encompasses more property than we currently have. And if you go to the next, that's even further in the process, when we actually had a rendering done, which is pretty sharp. This plan was unable to be achieved. Then we get to what we officially submitted earlier in 2024. I'm not sure the exact month, but this is the plan that we took in front of the Historic Commission for two meetings, and then the Planning Commission. This finally officially submitted plan shows 60 units. It's a little hard to see the building, but the building is shaped like the triangle. In the middle's a courtyard. So, this is not too far from where we're at today, but this was 60 units submitted earlier this year. So we were up to 98 units, 87 units. I know I mentioned this unit count last time, but without seeing all the sketches and designs that went along with this, and we have a lot more sketches that, you know, little adjustments along the way. So this was the plan that was submitted in earlier this year, 60 units. Today, September 11, 2024, I stand before you with a plan for 55 units. It's down from 98 units at the largest, with 11,000 square feet of retail, with something like almost 200 parking spaces. The plan has been pushed, shrunk, squeezed from every direction, from every board, for every comment, and we have done the best we can to accommodate everybody. Sometimes, we just can't make every single little aspect work, but we're doing our best, I promise, to work with the township and continue the good faith that we've shown for the past six years. This plan shows the corner of the building coming out, the loss of two parking spaces, the saving of the one sycamore tree. Now, if you go to the next slide, this just shows the dairy barn facade, what we're proposing. This is all just kind of going in line with bolstering the redevelopment, reevaluation of the Route 30 corridor. Zach, if you can go to that next photo, it's the outdoor seating, which is another thing that's been mentioned several times in the revitalization of the Route 30 corridor, the dairy barn interior. And lastly, we show the garages and some parking in the back. I also prepared a statement that I'd like to read with regards to history of the property. Oh, yeah, that's, okay. Okay, "We purchased this property after carefully following and attending community meetings and redevelopment efforts by the township to spur development within the Route 30 corridor. The master plan laid out by this township is a vibrant vision for what could be versus what is here today. We were and still are excited to bring the vision for 370 West Lancaster Avenue to life. The township appeared to have open arms toward adaptive reuse and development. We contacted zoning and planning officers and had begun the journey with a team of architects, engineers, and attorneys to shape the concept that could work both for us and township's future together. For six years, we scrutinized our plans, along with thousands of hours of professional input, before finally submitting a plan earlier this year. Along the way, we had several planning subcommittee meetings with the township and spoke with traffic engineers, historians, and many public and private townspeople. Here, we garnered positive support and feedback for this project, understanding that we're all on the same team. We have had two Historic Commission meetings where we made several changes to the barn. The Historic Commission was very supportive of the barn restoration and its adaptive reuse. They were enthusiastic that we could save the barn, unlike the previous developer who filed a permit for demolition, which was denied in 2017. We then continued on to the Planning Commission. Here, we heard the concerns of the board, fire marshal, more township professionals, and then further tweaked the plans to demonstrate compliance with the updated code provisions. In doing so, we further reduced the units from 60 to 58. The Planning Commission voted to recommend not only conditional use approval, but also to recommend special exception approval after two meetings. We became, we came before this board on August 14, just last month, and believe we had a productive meeting. We were asked to identify a couple of large trees on site and were told to hire an arborist to help identify the location of those trees and the overall landscaping on this property. We did that. Today, we are here with Megan Shomper, an arborist, who will testify to the trees on site and how we modified the plans to accompany the wishes of the Board of Supervisors. We altered the building to save the sycamore. We also spoke further about density, and the board questioned whether we could further reduce the number of units. During the redesign, we further reduced the units from 58 to now 55. We picked up four additional parking spaces and reduced the building footprint to stay outside the drip line of the sycamore behind the Rubino property. We changed portions of the paving so that we now propose pervious paving in the areas closest to the tree. This will help preserve the life of the sycamore and give it adequate water supply. We've been excited to bring this homemade ice cream shop to life. We are deeply committed to building, maintaining, and operating this business within our family. The ice cream parlor we operate now is called the Sunday Times. A pun on the Sunday word, but also like the New York Times. It's in Jersey, so it's not that far from New York. That's in Spring Lake, New Jersey. It's an amazing business that offers a wonderful community feel to the township. We hire approximately 30 high school and college kids each year. It's a summer business, so it's different than year-round, but we hire a lot of local kids. Parents often call and send letters year-round about how they would love their child to be one of the hires for the next season. It's a great opportunity to employ young adults and teach them skills and see them develop over the years. The culture around the shop is a lot of fun and a true special family gem. We envision a vibrant, fun, healthy, energetic atmosphere for the dairy barn, a place where the community can gather for coffee, homemade ice cream, laughs, and cherish memories in a 300-year-old restored barn. Please, 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 do not kill the dream of saving the historic barn. And please do not let the efforts of dozens of people working for seven years to go wasted. Let's work together with a common goal of a vibrant, pedestrian-oriented, beautiful, reimagined Route 30 corridor for East Whiteland Township. Thank you.
Matt, part of my role, unfortunately, as lawyer, is put a fine point on that. I'm only going to ask you one or two more questions.
Sure.
We assume, as you just quoted from the Route 30 corridor study, we assume the township goal is to preserve. Can you comment on whether you believe it's feasible to redevelop the site by simply renovating the barn or doing a modest addition to the barn, simply using it for one of the currently committed uses, the FC?
I would say in our case, for this business, it's not. So typically, if you were going to go open, let's say, a coffee shop or an ice cream parlor, you go to, let's just call it like a retail strip center. You get a vanilla shell. They have all your 110 and 220 wiring. You have concrete floors with plumbing already run for your bathrooms and things like that. You already have a parking lot outside. You're responsible for the outside walls in. This property has no parking. It's 300 years old. There's no power. There's no anything to the site. Just before you can get one car to park on site legally and operate as a business, the highway occupancy permit is over $100,000 through the state because it's on a Route 30. The cost to refurbish this barn is dramatic, and if you were just doing it to have an ice cream shop, you'd have to be nuts. There's no one that would do it. And I think it's not even, not even just the ice cream shop concept, but how does a property in such a great location for 30, 40 years sit vacant? It's almost unheard of. You would have somebody come saying, "I have to do something to this property. The frontage is great. The traffic is great." Why hasn't something happened here? There's some reason that this barn is causing a problem for most developers or retail owners. It's just too expensive to get off the ground. I mean, the floor in the barn is just like old plank wood. That's all uneven. You couldn't have people walk in there and run a business. You'd have people trip, and you'd have a lawsuit on day one. The whole barn needs to be stripped and made up to, the stone needs to remain, but the roof has to be insulated. You need to redo all the beams. Everything is sagging. The floor has termite damage. It's rotting out. It all has to be made safe before any improvements can even be done to bring the business to life.
Matt, in your, kind of the culmination of your supervisors' testifies, that the current unit count was the minimum necessary to make this, so that through this redesign, you're able to make a modest further reduction, hopefully doesn't cause you to break, felt like someone was breaking 58. But are you confident in that test, unit count, that the minimum necessary to make this?
I do. I just don't, I don't see how we could save the barn and work around all this expensive real estate and try to still make it a financial win. It's just, it's just very tight. Doing a building like this is extremely expensive. The site work alone, you're talking millions of dollars before anything comes out of the ground. It's, it's, things are really expensive right now, and doing your fire suppression systems, your alarm systems, making everything come up to code is wildly expensive. Do you want to do it, Mike?
That's all I have for Matt. Obviously, reserving the right on what happens after the hearing. Back to special counsel, reserving the right to...
Can I make a suggestion? If we hear all the testimony, because we're going to continue this no matter what?
The other two are much shorter, I promise.
Well, and I guess that's my question is, can you bring back all three witnesses to the next hearing, and then we'll ask the questions then, or we can do it piecemeal? It's totally up to you guys.
You mean any questions we have based on the testimony we just heard?
Yes.
I don't think I have any, maybe one?
Sure, go ahead.
Mine's real simple. Matt, you're talking of the dairy barn being pretty active... Matt, you're, you're talking of the dairy barn being pretty active, it seems like in the summertime with the kids and bringing them in. Is it a year-round business, though?
For the dairy barn, would be year-round, yeah.
It is.
Yeah, the, the one in, in New Jersey is one block from the beach. Come like October, it's, the wind just howl, it's, you'd have no customers. But dairy barn would be year-round, seven days a week, yep, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just a clarification of the two trees identified, one can be saved.
That's correct.
Okay. By the loss of three units.
Yes.
Okay.
And, and that's why I wanted to show, like, last time we were here, we were talking about the density, and I was referring to numbers, but maybe some of you have or never seen some of those. I wanted to show there's actual architectural plans over the past years that have been manipulated all the way from almost 100 units down to 55 at this point. So there's been a lot of given to, I mean, we've really squeezed and pushed and manipulated this a lot to make everything work.
It's very helpful, because I don't remember hearing of this before last month. So, very helpful.
Thank you.
And then, yeah, then we have the parties we have to go through. The parties in the audience, if you have any questions, please come on up, because again, we're on, online also, so you have to talk into the microphone.
Yeah, so I'd be glad to talk in the microphone.
Just identify yourself with the court reporter.
I'm going to. I just want to make sure I'm on the microphone. Glenn, with two N's, H, Cockerham, C-O-C-K-E-R-H-A-M. Everybody will be able to spell my name after a while. Thank you. I have a question of the applicant tonight, because you said that you had somebody look at the trees. And I would like to know how old you figure the trees are, because I've lived here three quarters of a century myself, and my father talked about them. And he was 57 when he died. And there's stories that I have from him about the lady that lived in that house, and she had a couple cows, and she was allowed to walk them across the cemetery and across the back of my place. And finally, there was a little water hole behind Rita's water ice there, and she could water her cattle there. So there's a whole lot of history there. Those trees have got to be at least 100 years or better old, in my opinion. But I'd like to know, have you had somebody figure out how old those trees could be?
Mr. Cockerham, we're going to call our arborist. That's a question welcome to ask. That, and.
Okay.
But we have another witness that's going to talk about.
Okay, because I would like to see anything like that. I know it was brought up at the prior meeting, along with the other things that we've talked about, but I'll, I'll save them for later. But I'd like to know more about the trees. And I think that they ought to try to be preserved the best that you possibly could. And thank you. And board, I want to thank you for your, your listening to me and your cooperation and the rest of the audience. Thank you.
With that, can I call Megan Shomper, please?
I do.
Megan, can you please state and spell your last name for the record, please?
My name is Megan Shomper, M-E-G-H-A-N, Shomper, S-H-O-M-P-R.
And Megan, with whom are you currently employed and in what capacity?
I'm employed at Inland Design. I am a landscape architect and also a certified arborist.
And so you are a registered landscape architect in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, is that correct?
That is correct.
And as a registered landscape architect and certified arborist, have you previously testified before municipalities, whether zoning hearing boards or board supervisors?
I have.
And have you previously testified in East Whiteland Township?
I have not.
I have included in our exhibit package, exhibit A11. I think we've shown this to you before, but just so we're clear on the record, is A11, an accurate statement of your educational and professional qualifications?
Yes.
We would like to offer Megan Shomper as a registered landscape architect as well as an arborist, certified arborist. Trying to offer her as an expert, and the board would have to accept her as an expert. Bernadette was taking notes quickly.
Yes. So I, you said landscape architect, and I was looking.
Certified arborist.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I was just looking at the CV, which is exhibit tab 11, and certified arborist. I don't know if the board has any specific questions.
No, and I have no problem.
Anybody in the audience have any questions? And I can also show you.
Peter has a question.
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, Megan.
Hello.
No offense to your arbor certification, but in most court proceedings or municipal proceedings, a board-certified master arborist is usually the accepted qualified expert, not just a certified arborist. In, in all, in my experiences, in expert testimony.
Maybe that's appropriate for me to address from a legal perspective, because in a court proceeding, the standard would be a little bit different than before a board supervisors for a conditional use proceeding. We don't have the same rigid evidence or standards, and I certainly think Mrs. Shomper has evidence through her area, I'm sorry, her curriculum vitae, that she has expertise and experience when you hear that testimony.
I don't have any exception to it, but I just want to find some clarification. B C M A, board-certified master arborist versus just a certified arborist. I, I, I accept that.
Yeah, so I just want to be clear. So you are not a board-certified? Master arborist.
I'm a certified, I'm an ISA certified arborist. There's another here that is master arborist.
Okay, so I just want to be clear for the record, you are not a board-certified master arborist, just a certified arborist. Got it?
Is that in the world of arborists versus the world of Pennsylvania licensing?
It's International Society of Arborists.
Okay, it's nothing to do with being licensed in the state. Okay, that's my thought, okay.
And then I apologize, I was asking if anyone in the parties had a question from the audience in reference to the qualifications of the witnesses. Seeing none, go, go ahead.
Megan, are, are you familiar with the property that's subject to this hearing this evening?
I am.
And am I correct that you have visited that property on at least one occasion, if not more?
I've visited three times. I went out with surveyors, and I went out with the applicant, and I went out yesterday at drip line.
Describe your findings with respect to trees on site and particularly, paying particular attention to the two.
When I went out to the site, my concentration was. Property went to the back, behind the ruins of the, the house, and we measured that, that sycamore at 50 inches diameter, breast height. And then we went to the other side of the property and found the other sycamore in question. We measured that sycamore also, at 31 inches, D B H diameter, breast height. Both, uh, both of those trees are very healthy and very vigorous. The one smaller one, the 31-inch caliper sycamore, is located right next to a parking lot. The other one is hidden back behind, in the center of the property.
And when you identified the locations of the trees, I think you mentioned this, but you also took measurements or what arborist would do to determine the extent of the drip line, correct?
Correct.
And then you shared that information with the civil engineers and the architects?
Correct.
And then did you work with Mr. Arty, the engineers, as well as architects, to recommend to them revisions to the plans to attempt to save the 31-inch sycamore? So then want to identify, or have you identify, exhibit A12. Is A12 a memo that you prepared dated September 6, 2024?
It is.
And if you could, can you describe what that memo states and the conclusions reached, the recommendations?
When I went out to the site, the objectives were to review the two subject trees' locations as well, to make a visual analysis of the vegetated area of the site regarding access for tree survey and basis species and tree population, and to evaluate the site for a tree survey timing. The subject site consists of three woodland settings, a riparian buffer with species made up of maple and black walnut as the dominant, maple and black walnut as the dominant species. Two, there are colonizing species consisting of black walnut and Kentucky coffee trees and a very invasive understory. The subject area consists of an even-aged and uneven, and an uneven stand. Majority of the area consists of colonizing tree species. A large majority of these are black walnuts. Black walnuts produce a toxic substance called juglone that prevents many plants from growing under or near them. Kentucky coffee trees tend to populate in colonies that generate from the roots of the trees. This is, there is an expansive and highly prolific invasive species present at the understory level. Tree story for the site should be done in the fall months after leaf drop. The dense understory will be manageable, and trees and saplings will be more visible at this time. Turning the trees of interest, sycamore trees. There are two mature sycamore trees were located on the site. First sycamore is approximately 50 inches diameter, breast, at breast height, and located behind the existing building ruins. Second sycamore is approximately 31 inches in D B H, 72 feet tall, and located approximately at the southwest corner of the adjacent lot owned by Rubino Holdings. Due to the history of the site, most likely planted by a previous landowner and not from an involved naturalized native woodland. There are also other species of trees and evergreens on the site, arborvitae and spruce that were most likely planted by a. Property owner, project design team, and I have worked to develop a plan and program to preserve the 31-inch sycamore tree. First, the proposed architectural plans have been redesigned and modified to change the building construction to avoid removal of the 31-inch. Secondly, a during and post-construction program has been developed and will be instituted to preserve this tree. Below methods will be used for presentation, preservation of the tree. Tree protection plan. Complete plan will be developed for the sycamore tree and will be included in the land development and grading plan submissions for the project. Protecting trees from damage during construction can be accomplished effectively with an understanding of potential construction impacts and implementing relatively simple and effective protection options. These efforts are described below. Sensitive construction methods to be utilized. Plan to use sensitive construction and site work techniques in the vicinity of protected trees. Survey the construction site and identify all trees that need protection. Make comprehensive plan to avoid soil compaction and to protect tree roots, trunk, and limbs as discussed here. Modifying construction techniques where necessary to minimize tree damage. In the vicinity of the tree to be protected, use the smallest equipment possible or accomplish tasks by hand where feasible. If excavation is needed, use soil boring equipment that tunnels well under a tree's root system rather than using a backhoe or other trenching equipment. Avoid soil compaction. Avoid soil compaction within a tree's drip line during the construction process. Minimize the use of heavy equipment, storage of supplies and materials, and work activities within or near a tree's drip line. If the scope of the project must include work or access within the tree's drip line or near the trunk, apply interlocking, heavy equipment mats, three-quarter inch plywood, six inches of organic mulch, and other materials that help to absorb and distribute the weight of the equipment, foot traffic, or storage of materials in order to prevent soil compaction. If possible, aerate the soil with long core aerator equipment before, during, and after construction activities, and backfill aeration holes with composted organic material to aid in mitigating the impacts of compaction. Take special care to minimize construction equipment or foot traffic near protected trees following a rain event or irrigation when soil is vulnerable to compaction. Protect the root tree, the tree roots from physical damage during the entire construction project. Create a tree protection zone around the drip line of each tree preserved to minimize access to the area and prevent the area from being excavated, used to stockpile material, dump debris, or for equipment access and storage. Clearly define the boundaries of the tree protection zone by installing a temporary fence around the zone. At a minimum, place a fencing at the edge of the canopy drip line. If soil excavation is to occur within the tree protection zone adjacent to the aged tree, try to clear around larger roots by hand and leave as many of them as intact as possible. Ideally, use an air spray or similar equipment to remove soil from around the roots as an alternative to excavating with power equipment or hand digging. If roots must be exposed to the air, they should be kept moist by installing and using a temporary irrigation or mist system while site construction is underway and under, until the exposed roots can be recup, be covered with soil. While it is best not to alter the soil grade within a tree's drip line, it is sometimes necessary for construction. If necessary, keep the depth of changes to a maximum of three inches. Bigging changes in soil grade can affect the fine root system that exists within six to 12 inches below grade. Added soil can inhibit roots from breathing by smothering them and essentially suffocating the roots. Protect the tree trunks and limbs from physical damage from construction equipment. Protect tree trunks from mechanical damage prior to construction. If a tree trunk is close to the construction work or staging area, wrap the entire trunk with two-by-four lumber or other protective material. Place two-by-fours vertically, side by side, around the diameter of the tree trunk and hold securely in place with strapping. This will protect the tree trunk from potential physical damage from vehicles, equipment, hand tools, or debris being used in the project area. Prior to construction, pull and tie back limbs that may impede the construction zone, minimizing pruning or removing limbs. Even large limbs over three inches in diameter may have flexibility to be effective, may have the flexibility to be effectively pulled and tied away from the work area. Properly prune branches or roots that are broken and/or damaged during construction. Any limbs or roots that are damaged during the work should be removed with a clean saw cut at adjoining limb or branch using good pruning tech. Tree conditions in post-construction zones should be monitored regularly for signs of damage. Construction impacts to trees are often not readily visible and can manifest over months or decline. It may be a few years or more before a tree shows symptoms and decline from construction impacts. Tree condition in post-construction zones should be monitored regularly each year. Professional certified arborists should be consulted if any indications or of deterioration appear, yellowing of leaves on multiple limbs, dieback leaning, dropping of limbs, mushroom or fungi, growth on roots, trunks, trunk or limbs. A tree risk assessment by a qualified professional arborist should be performed if any indication of deterioration appear. Provide mitigation measures. Here's some quick bullet points. Contractors to be made aware about protecting mature trees. Install construction fencing around tree root zones to create a physical barrier and visual reminder for workers. Restrict heavy machinery and construction traffic from entering tree protection zones to mitigate soil compaction. Protect tree trunks and limbs from physical damage from construction equipment. Properly prune branches or roots that are broken and/or damaged during construction. Create a tree protection zone around each tree, minimize access to the area, and prevent it from being excavated or used for other purposes. Provide for these measures as part of the approved landscape plan for the project.
Thank you. Megan, I know that's detailed, and that's all now part of applicants' day-to-day well. But is it fair to say that the recommendations you included in your memo and that you put into the record are tried and true practices or generally accepted practices for preserving old specimen trees?
Yes.
Okay. And is it your professional opinion that following the recommendations that you put in your memo will provide the greatest likelihood for success, meaning preservation of the 31-inch sycamore?
Yes.
And have you discussed these recommendations with the applicant?
Yes.
And has the applicant indicated to you that they are willing to abide by your recommendations and have them be part of the condition? and have them be part of the conditions of any approval, whether it be approval or mainly a land development approval?
Yes.
I would like to add, from my experiences as an arborist and working with consulting arborists, what can be the most significant of the, all these recommendations are spot-on, industry standard. But the most significant recommendation, which is not on here, is the, a significant monetary fine to the contractor if they break any of these rules. It's as simple as that because no one's going to be there every day. But if there is a potential fine hanging over their head, that usually keeps most contractors as honest as they can be. Again, it has to be significant because they may just be willing to take the hit for the fine versus working around it. That's, that's all I really have to add to your very detailed recommendations.
Just one minor question I've got, Megan, is, what's the width of the drip line on the 31-inch tree?
It's approximately 20.
20 feet?
That varies from side to side because canopy on one side has shaded out from sun and by the existing.
And, and on the 50, the 51-inch, what would be the drip line on that?
That would probably be.
30 feet.
I did not measure.
Okay, just.
That would be impossible, it was hard to measure that one because that was smack dab in the middle. Of course, there.
Okay, thank you.
One follow-up if I can. Megan, I think we talked about this, but you mentioned the proximity of the 31-inch sycamore to parking lot. That's a parking lot on an adjacent site, correct?
Correct.
But despite its proximity to that, that concrete asphalt parking lot, it has continued to thrive and thrive.
Correct.
And you have no reason to continue to if we implemented the recommendations?
Correct.
I have about three questions.
I'm sorry. Yeah, and the parties in the audience, I'm sorry.
I'll try and actually anticipate that question.
Yeah, well, okay.
Megan, as a layperson, I would assume generally you would have to cut a tree down to exact age. Please, can you give a range of how old you think these trees may be?
Yes, well, there's a calculation that uses factor of the tree. More growth factors for diameter, base height. And so the 31-inch tree is approximately 120 years old. And the 50-inch caliber tree is approximately 200 years old.
And I will, and I know to the parties, you heard the witness read the memo, and I know it's a little hard sometimes to follow along. I can give you a copy of my memo if you'd like to see that because I know that was a lot. Oh, you have an extra one? Okay.
Glenn with two N's. Okay, you got it. H. Cogram. Okay. You talked about the 30-inch or 31-inch tree, sycamore. What's the matter with trying to save the 50-inch? You gotta lose too much of the building site?
That's a question actually. She was just checking out the trees.
Okay, I want to tell you something. I think you did an excellent job of reading all that information the supervisor picked up on it. It came directly out of one of the books. Thank you.
I can say that you can.
I do. Good evening, Chuck Dobson, Inland Design, again.
Mr. Dobson, I know I've shown them to you. I have marked this evening exhibit A-13. And can you identify that or am I identifying it correctly as a revised site plan prepared by your office to incorporate the changes that we've discussed this evening to avoid removal of the 31-inch sycamore tree?
That is correct.
Can you just in your own words describe the revisions to the plan that were made to accommodate saving of that?
Absolutely. I think it's probably most effective. If you could go to. And so what we have here is, oh, there you go. As previously testified by Mr. Lombardi and, and Ms. Shomper, on the northeast corner of the building, we've identified the location of the 31-inch sycamore tree. And what we did after careful study is we were able to effectively notch out the building. And in doing so, the benefit of that is the building can be placed where it is outside the drip lines of the tree. There is almost no proposed grade changes in location of the tree, so that, that will not change at all. And then what we've done is, in an abundance of caution, we added some permeable pavers that would be on the periphery of the drip line. And again, that's just simply there to, intended to maximize the porosity of the soil around the drip line so that the roots can continue to be fed with water. There was also the reduction of units from 58 to 55. And as a result of the reduction of units and the slight modifications to the parking areas, the last submission we had, we exactly met the parking requirements, which was two parking spaces per proposed unit regardless of the number of bedrooms, and then 26 spaces for the ice cream shop. Now, as a result of the unit reduction and the slight modifications to the parking, we now find that we have a, an additional four spaces. So we're actually overparked by a total of four spaces relative to the number of units requiring parking and the ice cream parlor parking.
Mr. Dobson, if we can, I believe our sheets titled existing conditions, and I just want to identify for the board. 50-inch tree to give a sense of where.
I, you know what, this is actually, I actually have an exhibit that I marked up because I kind of anticipated this question. So using this sheet three here, if you look at the gray area, which is the basement parking garage, and Zach, just to the left of your pointer, there is a number seven. If you can see that. Yeah, it's a seven down to the left. There you go, right there, the number seven. That tree, the, the center trunk of that tree is located in the parking space immediately to the right of that. So the tree is literally in the, in the center of the building relative to all of the improvements proposed. Mr. Lambert asked me last hearing, you know, whether or not we could do anything to save the tree. And while I would have loved to have been able to say yes, because of the proximity of that tree with respect to all of the improvements proposed, it will simply not be possible to save that tree given the proposal. All right, so, so we have, in the gray area, that represents the underground parking garage. The numbers are indicative of parking. Yeah, right where the cursor is. Yeah. And Zach, if you wanted to, I guess, go to sheet two, that actually does show the location of the tree with respect to the ruins that are on the property. There you go. That's sheet two.
Pause, let me know. So, Mr. Dobson, other than preserving the tree in question and the improvements or modifications that you just mentioned, does exhibit A-13 have any other material changes, planned features that are changing effect to the overall development, including things like access and?
It does not.
Okay, so it remains consistent with the testimony you presented last month?
Yes, it does.
And I think you stated this in your conclusion, but clear, you did testify previously that in your, your opinion, it's not, it's not feasible to avoid removal of that other sycamore. And based on the investigation that you have just performed, that your team performed, your discussions with Megan, work with the architect, is it correct that that conclusion has not been altered by those investigations?
That is also correct.
I've got a hands-on question. Zach, is there any way that you could put this plan up, the original one? Sheet three? 58 or 55?
Yeah.
Which one? The sheet, the current sheet three. Okay, maybe it's.
That would be exhibit A-5.
Just to clarify slightly for the record, I think what Mr. Lambert's asking is for sheet three of the plan set. He's showing me a previous version of the plan. Are you asking just for sheet three to be displayed on the screen for orientation purposes?
Yeah, yeah. So Zach, I'm sorry, just sheet three of the, of A-13 is what you're going to put on the screen?
Currently showed on the screen is sheet A-3 of the current plan set. What I was asked in reference to is sheet three of a previous plan set that was provided as part of the review prior to some of the revisions leading up to the last hearing and this hearing.
Okay, but so what we're asking to put up on the screen is a plan that is not currently part of the record.
Yes, I'm not sure. Is it not the plan from A-5?
Scott, do you just want a site plan that shows the building and the structure parking?
Let me see if I can find, let me see if I can find a plan that's, that's been read into, yeah, you know what? No, there it is. So it would be what's currently listed, the original, the original documentation that you had given us with the packet under number five, I would assume that was read into the record previously?
It was.
Yeah, so, so are you okay if we were to pull that one up? Because that was read in?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, all right.
Just so that we know we're all working on something in the record.
Right, so you know which one?
A-5, sheet three? A-5, sheet three, right, okay.
See where your son of an architect is? So what, what you're, what you're showing is basically just east of number seven, number seven, is that 51-inch, 200-foot old tree?
That's correct.
Is there some architectural design which I could see being really attractive to? Is it if you literally cut out this section here? Almost made it like a courtyard at this corner?
Right.
And maybe attach whatever units are associated with this to some other portion of the building? That may be more, but could, could you potentially just cut that out in that term so that that, that 30 feet required for that tree to continue prosper? As well as the fact I think would be pretty darn attractive for those that are living here to have that tree sitting right in that location? Again.
I, I think I understand your question. So this is what I would offer in response. So the diameter of the drip line is, I believe Ms. Shomper indicated was 30 feet. So it's effectively 30 feet from the trunk. So the total diameter is more than 60 feet. And if, if that tree is to remain viable long-term, then we would really have to do everything we could to avoid the drip line or the root system of the tree itself. Now, what that plan depicts there is a basement drawing of the garage. And what, the lighter colored parking that's not graded out, that's just up above that number seven you just referenced, is actually a second level at-grade parking area. So there would be so much disturbance to the ground around that tree just by virtue of the construction, even if we were to try to save it, that in my opinion, and again, I'm not an arborist and nor am I an architect, but in 30 years of experience, I think it's safe to say that that tree would probably not be viable long-term. I think it's interesting to note that one of the things about our ability to save the 31-inch sycamore is that 60 or 70%, probably even more than that, of the perimeter of that tree will remain in its natural condition and won't be disturbed at all. So I would love to be able to sit here and say, to you folks and the room that, yeah, we can save it and it'll work. I simply can't do that. So I'll have to stand by my testimony from last hearing, which is I just don't see any viable way to save that tree.
Okay. That was my question.
I don't have any questions.
Peter. Any of the parties have any questions of Mr. Dobson? No. Any of the other parties? Sometimes can't say. No, okay. Donna, I apologize, I haven't been asking all along.
No, I just was going to ask you, there is somebody that's not a party that would like to ask a question.
And normally I let it slide. Let's go, let's, let's give the first.
Carol, go ahead, please. Carol, go ahead.
Hi, this is Carol Raff. Last name is R, A double P is a Peter.
Egan Village Way. So my, my concern here is listening to what the initial plans were and where they are today. The initial plans had absolutely no regard for the trees that were on the property. And now we're supposed to feel bad that they had to cut back the plan because there's old trees. I mean, I can't believe we're going to actually cut down a 300-year-old tree.
Carol, Carol, I'm going to have to interrupt you. This is just questions of Mr. Dobson. Not comments, just questions.
Okay, so will we get a chance to add our comment?
That would be up to the board. We are going to continue this hearing and I think we took most of the comments last time, so, but we may do it again since there's more testimony. But that'll be at the discretion of the board. But at this point, we're just doing questions of Mr. Dobson.
Okay, well, then my question would be, he was saying there was no way we can save the tree. My question to him would be, if you altered the configuration of the building like Scott was saying, you could save the tree, correct?
I don't believe that's the case. I think saving that tree would require a completely different plan proposal. That may or may not be viable, but that's Mr. Lombardi's decision to make.
Well, and that might be. That's all, Donna, thank you.
Bernadette, obviously reserving the right to recall any of our witnesses. If it's necessary, if anyone requires, we will rest our case. And would ask that applicants exhibits A-1 through A-13, except for A-8, which?
A-7.
A-7, be admitted into.
Does, does the board? Does the board have any objection to the exhibits being entered into the record?
I have none.
I have none.
I have none.
Parties, any objection to the admittance of the Exhibits A 1 through 13 with the exception of A 7? They skipped over that. Okay, seeing none? Okay. At this point, understanding as a courtesy, we move those motions on.
Yes.
So we are going to continue the hearing again to a date certain of, I apologize, I think it's October 9th, correct? October 9th at 6:30 PM, with the understanding, Rob, that I had emailed Mr. Brosman if there were dates, and I understand I did it today and he wasn't able to get back to me. If we picked another date, we would have to advertise that. But for the time being, in case we can all come to an agreement on a date, this hearing will be continued to October 9th at 6:30 PM.
And given the fact that we were able to conclude our testimony this evening, that should help with scheduling purposes because I assume that my witnesses do not necessarily need to return for any additional questioning by the board. We may bring them anyway, but...
I think the board would be... Oh, I'm sorry, Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, now, on that note, is it the arborist memo, is that something that we would have reviewed by our consultants at this stage, or...
Normally, we would, yeah.
That's the only thing I can think of, which may cause...
And we will simply bring our witnesses back just in case there are any further comments or questions. We will do that just to make sure.
And we would know based on the review, so...
Just trying to help with scheduling more than anything else, so...
Yeah, yes.
But for now, yes, we will all mark our calendars for October 9th at 6:30 PM.
Okay. And so I don't know if you want to hear... Oh, wait, wait. My question was, did you want to hear comments from the parties again, or do we want to wait till the full, complete hearing is completed?
And when you say the full hearing is completed, that would literally be the last component of comment from the public.
Yeah, that's what we normally do. We have the very last thing is all public comment.
Makes sense, because then it gives the public to have had the opportunity to also hear everything from everybody, right?
And...
And we would only have to hear it once.
Which I know you like, Rich.
We're here, we get paid the same either way.
And just to confer with Mr. Barner, I do believe the exhibits are on the website too, right?
I will confirm, and if the applicant team could send their updated exhibit packet, I can upload that as well.
Yeah, so they then have the opportunity, because I'm not sure they all got copies that we get of the exhibit. So my suggestion, Carol, is we're going to wait to have public comment to the very end of the hearings. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So at this time, we will close out this hearing. Parties, again, once again, we're going to continue this to next month's meeting. If there is a determination that we're going to pick a different date, I will, if you could please give Mr. Barner your email, we will email you that date. So before you leave, give Mr. Barner your email. And if there's nothing else, I think we can close out the hearing and go back to the motions. Okay, I'm going to close out the hearing, and I thank our court reporter, and I apologize for not giving you a break.
We're going to continue the hearing, not close the hearing?
Yes, close out the hearing for tonight. We're continuing the hearing on the record, but for this evening. And I apologize for not giving you a break. I'm sorry?
We have now closed the public hearing.
We've closed the public hearing for this evening, but it is continued on the record.
So now we go...
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're good. Oh, my God, you do. I'm so sorry. So back on the agenda, we had gone out a little out of order. So we would go back to G, 3G, the motion to hire and appoint counsel, Sienna Law, to represent the interest of the township ordinance as part of the conditional use proceedings. I believe there was a motion, and we'd have to make that motion again. We left it hanging, I believe.
And this is just the motion to retain them, Bernadette?
Yes, says, I indicated earlier in the evening, right. So this is a motion to appoint, hire and appoint counsel. That counsel can decide to come out and oppose the application. They may decide that they're going to do nothing, or they may decide that there are conditions that should be imposed. They have to review all the information.
And in arriving on that conclusion, whatever it is, they will review the entire record.
Right, we have to provide them.
You've got to get a transcript and all that stuff, right?
Yeah.
I guess, okay, all right, okay.
Very good, then. I will make a motion to hire and appoint the counsel of Sienna Law to represent the interest of the township ordinance as part of the conditional use proceeding. Should I read the second one as well, Bernadette?
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Opposed?
Sorry, Rich.
No, I vote against. I vote against the motion.
We have it two to one. Okay, that's the first motion on the agenda. 3H is a motion to hire and appoint counsel, Sienna Law, to represent the township in opposition to the zoning hearing board application, which was on the agenda last month, was continued, and is now again before you. Application 2024-02, Penncrest Properties LLC, as to the same property located at 370 Lancaster Avenue.
And that application, that is for a special exception, right?
Correct.
No variances, or is it just...
And Zach and John, I believe there were no variances. I think it was all special exceptions.
Okay, all right, I was, okay.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to hire and appoint the counsel of Sienna Law to represent the township in opposition to the ZHB application 2024, Penncrest Properties LLC, as the property located at 370 Lancaster Avenue.
Just to clarify, zoning hearing, application 2024-02. I second that motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I vote against it again.
Thank you. And I'm going to open the public hearing on that, and this is, bear with me, this is a public hearing on an ordinance of East Whiteland Township, amending Section 189-28, parking prohibited at all times, to prohibit parking on both sides of the entire length of Gulfview Lane. And I'm going to mark a series of exhibits. B1 is the August 27th, 2024 email and letter to the Daily Local with a legal notice and proposed ordinance. B2 is the August 27th, 2024 email and letter to the Law Library with a copy of the attested proposed ordinance. B3, the proof of publication. B4, the ordinance. B5, the August 27th, 2024 letter from Daniel D.J. Matthews, Assistant Fire Marshal. And B6, the September 9th, 2024, letter from Chris Williams, from Bowman, the Township Traffic Engineer. At this time, I don't know if the board had any specific comments or questions on the ordinance, or wanted further information. Sorry, Rich, go ahead.
No, and this is just a discussion? We're not authorizing advertisement, right? Or is that the intent?
No, no, this ordinance has been advertised. This is the public hearing to consider the ordinance.
On Gulfview Lane?
Yes.
Yeah.
I don't even remember last month authorizing, but I guess if you say we did, we did.
Maybe it would be good to have Greg Lewis, or he's not only our fire chief, he's also our fire marshal, and he could explain from the fire department's perspective, the concerns. And there's also a letter we received from our traffic engineer regarding the subject that I guess Bernadette should be made an exhibit.
We did. That was Exhibit...
Okay, sorry.
A 5 is the letter from the Assistant Fire Marshal, and B6 is the letter from Chris Williams.
All right. I just, I thought then, you know, maybe a few remarks from Greg would be helpful.
So on August 15th, the day after the Board of Supervisors meeting last month, myself and Assistant Fire Marshal Daniel Matthews, we did go out to Gulfview Lane. We did take one of our fire engines, did drive that entire street. When we did drive that street, about halfway up the block, there was three cars parked on the street. Our access through there, we were able to get around those vehicles, back around to the back of the development. So what we did do, we did take a measuring wheel with us, and we measured the cul-de-sac, and we measured the width of the street. So what I'm going to do is reference the 2009 International Adopted Fire Code that the township adopted. So a fire apparatus access road is a road that provides fire apparatus access from a fire station to a facility, building, or portion thereof, fire lane, public street, private street, parking lot lane, and an access roadway. Gulfview Lane does have a fire hydrant, and it is a dead-end street. So what that means is the cul-de-sac on Gulfview Lane would have to be 96 feet wide at its widest point. With the measuring wheel, we measured the cul-de-sac at 58 feet 6 inches, plus or minus. Also, to have on-street parking, the street would have to be in excess of 26 feet, excluding the curb line. We measured its widest point at 19 feet 10 inches wide. So with that being said, with the adopted fire code, we have recommended no on-street parking on Gulfview Lane.
The 19-foot measurement was carway to carway.
Side to side, all the way.
Right, right. Asphalt to asphalt, right?
Correct.
All right, okay.
And that was at 19 feet 10 inches plus or...
Is there only one fire hydrant on that entire street?
There is.
Is that in and of itself sufficient?
It is for that length of street.
It is?
Yes.
And if this ordinance passes and someone calls the township, there's a car parked on the street, that would result in either a warning and/or a parking ticket, right?
Right, yes.
Is there anybody here from Gulfview that, yes, has a comment, a thought? All right, yeah, now's the time, yeah.
Yes, Kristy Doffey, 13, Gulfview Lane. So we came in August to address our concerns about parking on the street. Thank you very much for the response to date. It's been very helpful. We haven't had the same kind of issues. It is a very tight street. There were safety concerns, but they were due to the sheer volume of cars on the street. And now that's subsided. It's not as much of an issue anymore. I do think there still needs to be some kind of provision to make sure that the parking situation doesn't get tired, or perhaps like permanent parking or something like that, but to restrict all parking. It seems unfair to the residents of the street who might want to have family affairs and things like that. So I oppose it. I think there's a better solution, and I just think there is a better solution.
Robert Lottz, I live at 3 Gulfview Lane. I also oppose it. Also a life member of the fire organization, I've lived there my entire life, driven fire trucks up and down that street without a problem. If there is no parking whatsoever, what are we supposed to do when we have family over for Christmas or something like that? It's an unreasonable request for the problem that we had, which seems to have subsided. It's not necessary.
Is there continual monitoring of that street? That's what it sounded like from reading the police report.
Yeah, there's continuing monitoring.
And that continual monitoring will continue?
It is. I mean, it will, it can, but there is a point, like everything else. I mean, if we went back a year, two years, five years, 10 years, there's a million little spots that we have to continually monitor. So they may not quite get as much attention. I think the issue here was not so much the monitoring or the parking, is what we found by the fire marshal's measurements, that having parking on the street leaves us somewhat liable if there were an incident there and we couldn't get a fire truck up there. So it's, that's my assessment, is it's not like this is what we want to do by any means, but now we know about it.
That street still has to be repaved, right? Is all the work done? And any ETA on that?
And just to interrupt for John Miel, is responding.
So whenever it's repaved, if it's before it is, and there's a snowstorm, our plows have to get up there too. Have our plows ever had a problem that you remember in the past getting up and down that street?
We have a township rule of no street parking during snow emergencies, though.
And that's posted, just like on...
On neighborhoods, it's posted.
Those streets, okay, all right.
John, the intended paving is that 20-by, 20-foot-wide section only?
That's what's there now. There's no widening.
No widening of that.
And this is aqua. It's not the township doing it. Aqua's going to restore.
If the township was to do work, and the township does have the ability to widen the asphalt?
That would be quite an expensive job to get to 26 feet.
Yeah.
Because from what I heard, the maximum width was 19 feet 10 inches.
Right.
Get to 26, we're taking a few feet on each side.
Three feet from each side, right, yeah.
Every driveway, every mailbox.
Right.
Every lawn.
Yeah, I guess that wasn't one.
Cul-de-sac is 58. I heard it had to be 100.
Well, that can't, we'll never do that, yeah, okay. Once we pass an ordinance, it's there. The other option is to continue to monitor, I guess.
And I just wanted to go back on record, say as well, the reason for our site visit out to that the reason for our site visit out to that location was based on the feedback that we received at last board of supervisors. And there were specific complaints about the parking on the street. So that's the only reason that prompted a visit from the fire marshal's office to look at that. Once we were out there and took measurements, at that point, we were obligated to report those to other township staff of what we found them. So we weren't out there looking for it, but we needed to look into what the.
Even if we came up with some kind of permit parking arrangement, that would still have to be enforced too. So whether it's an ordinance preventing parking or giving permits, we have to give permits to residents. How do you even enforce that? You make sure whoever requests a permit has a driver's license at that address and no one else can get a permit. That's another enforcement difficulty. Um, I guess our choice is whether to put it past the ordinance or continue to monitor the situation, see how it goes.
Can I bring up another thing? Hit it for Gulfview Lane? Elk, because they're the exact same size. But all dead ends, same size cul-de-sacs.
Yeah, they are. I rode up and down there, I think in the same thing. The only difference is, and I don't know which one it is, Fairway or Elk. Some of those, the driveways are much longer on one side of the street, maybe both. So that's the only difference. I mean, I'm okay continuing to monitor this and see how it goes.
I understand, I absolutely understand your concern. Um, but I think one of the things that has happened is as a result of what's occurred, um, it's kind of come to our attention. So some, it needs to be addressed.
And this is just the public hearing. We, we can close out the hearing and go back to the public meeting. You don't have to vote on it this evening. You can, you can, yes, you can continue to think about it. I would just have to advertise when the meeting would be.
Yeah, I, if you guys are okay, maybe we can continue the conversation with, with staff and look at wording and other, well, we can review and have staff review based on these comments as well. Again, we hear what you're saying with the situation. Um, and maybe then revisit it. You know, with some other recommendations. Glenn, you have a question?
Uh, yes, more, more of a comment, if you don't mind. Uh, and I may upset the nice young lady back here. And Bob Lottz, I know him quite well from the fire company. And I had many years on the fire company myself, one way or the other, and earlier than Bob because I'm a lot more well-seasoned than he is. I'll be nice and put it that way. But what you have to look at and the, the people that live on all those streets have got to look at it as if it was your father, your daughter, your husband, your wife, or any one of your children. It don't make any difference. They might need the ambulance in a hurry. And if the road's blocked, one's here, one's there, and the ambulance can't maneuver and get up there and you get turned around, you got a problem, you could die. You know, I always want the ambulance to come get me and be able to find me. And I say that kindly to all of you. And I say that so that it gives you something to think about because it's important for the fire company. If your house is burning, they want to get to it. The people next door, they can't even smell the smoke. And I hate to say that, but that's about what happens. So I'm bringing this to your attention. Like I say, I can see some things out here that maybe some of you don't want to say, but at least it gives you some food for thought. And I'm, I'm saying it, and I, I think that's the right way to look at it. And I'm going to add another one to it because it was an ordinance passed when I was on the board for, uh, Prospect Avenue. And try going down Prospect Avenue. There's always a car here and a car there and two of them parked in front of the house. And I don't know how many lives in the house sometimes, but it's, it's, you know, it's just overwhelming. And the firehouse used to be below it and now it's not. But if somebody had to go up and go around that way, you need an ambulance. I don't care if it was for somebody up there or what family or any, what thing it is, you couldn't get to them. So that's my comment that I'm making and it goes both ways. But it's something you got to consider. Thank you very much, board, and I think you're doing a good job, all of you.
And it's correct in everything that you just said, other than the fact that on a typical day, there's not a street park. But if a family were to have friends over, there would be, and we're talking one side. The housing question that brought all this up was fifty, sixty cars at a time on both sides of the street. So, and that seems to have gone away. To punish the rest of us that live there doesn't make sense.
A, a question I'd, I'd like to maybe, maybe explore, and we don't have an answer now, but, but you know, what, what happens if, if you, if you, if you're allowed street parking only on one side? I don't know if that's a solution or not. Um, I, again, I, I don't know. It might be worth exploring or not, or may not be viable. I don't know, you know.
I think if I could, Zach Barner, director of planning, for the record. Um, the intent behind posting the street is so that it can be enforced if there were to be vehicles parked that would obstruct. So again, not that we selectively enforce, but generally it's not something we're patrolling, looking for, especially on a holiday weekend or times where there may be, uh, family gatherings. So I just wanted to make it clear on the record that part of the intention of passing this ordinance is so signs could be posted if it's so desired, so that it could be enforced. That's the intent of the, like sort of how these, these dolls stacked together. Pass the ordinance, post the property, able to enforce if needed. I just wanted to make sure that was clear and the dots were connected for everyone.
But it is the definition of if needed because one resident up there looks out, sees a car and doesn't like it there. Is that if needed?
That's a totally fair question. Um, I don't think we want to get into too many little subjective hypotheticals or anything like that, with all due respect, of course. Um, but certainly when there's large volumes of vehicles, that's a certainly different scenario than if there's a car or two parked, you know, visiting. So again, I don't want to be in the position that I'm the one trying to interpret that either, but certainly when there's larger events, having the ability to enforce, I think, would be a good option for our emergency services personnel.
Yeah, I, I, let's, let's take your comments in hand and everyone's comments and, um, continue working on and trying to craft something that makes sense from both sides. So I, I guess, um, if we can make a motion to pend it. Or table it till a later date.
Yes, so, uh, this is the public hearing portion of it. We could say that, um, at this point, we're going to, uh, table the ordinance and we're not going to make a motion to adopt it at this time.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Table.
So just for members of the audience, um, that, what will end up happening is, is, uh, nothing may happen or they may, the board may consider a, a different type of, um, ordinance or, um, they may come back to this one. So just keep checking in on the township website.
Yeah, there's not.
That's a yes.
We have contact information, we have addresses. Anytime this would be put back on an agenda, we would send a letter to you all. Yeah, there's no technical requirement for, that's certainly a courtesy we would, we would, we would give you.
I think at this point, um, we're, you're, we're back to the meeting, we're back to the public meeting. Um, I don't know if you wanted to review the updates on the violations at nine Gulfview Lane. We're done, thank you.
Sure, John, I guess we'll, we'll move to you to give us under four C, updates on the violations at nine, and I assume eleven Gulfview Lane.
Yeah, from, from, from the outset here, so far, uh, Mr. Castro, the owner of number nine, has been, uh, cooperative with us, uh, removed some things we ordered. Is in the process of, he applied for a permit to reinstall a court, which is being, um, processed at this time. Um, so we, we have other things we need compliance from him on, removing a porta potty, things like that. He's taken forceful fences down, taken lights down. So we've had, uh, some cooperation from him. But there's a lot of issues that, as we review the permits, there are other things that will be, uh, triggered and we're going through them, uh, uh, as a staff here to make sure that we don't miss nothing. And, um, on the same note, um, as we're doing this, um, we're finding that there's sections of the ordinances that, uh, regulate active and passive recreation, residential uses, so they're topics of, they're uh, topics of discussion between staff and hours, uh, research being done on how other municipalities have handled similar situations. Um, and we're talking about making some changes and tying them in with, um, you know, our zoning ordinance update on some of those issues too, to address the concerns that have arisen on this, uh, situation. And we do have one or two other similar situations going on in town that I'm working on.
Have permits actually been submitted requesting approval for sports and?
A, a sports court, yes.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
It's being processed, it hasn't been, hasn't been approved.
Oh, clearly, we would know that right away, I would think. Clearly.
Any of that on a steep slope?
No, it's pretty flat in the backyard.
It is flat back there, yeah.
Okay.
What are the requirements?
Um.
Is that in the construction code or the zoning ordinance or the subdivision ordinance?
Probably a little bit of, probably a little bit of everything.
Well, you have a chance, just pull them and send them around to us. You don't need to read them all now.
Sure, I actually had it on, on, on for my updates, so while we're talking about it. Accessory uses like that for a sports court has to be twenty-five feet from surrounding properties. Um, you can't be in front yards. And we're trying to nail down some things about what will help us say is use regulations on how you can use them. It's an accessory to a residence. It's not there to, uh, bring people and have leagues and fifty cars and a hundred people, that kind of stuff. So, yeah, that's why we've been sitting on an application and discussing it for, you know, two weeks now on, you know, the proposals that he has for that, for that property in particular. Correct. Could be, yes.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not that simple, right?
Is, is the permit for one or two courts?
It's unclear because the permit application is incomplete. Let's put it like that.
So with it being incomplete, the thirty-day clock doesn't even start?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
Would it, would it be safe to say if, if there was a request for two, it would be denied? Because there's?
Correct, because your zoning code is written to allow, on a residential accessory, a swimming pool, a sports court. It's literally written in, in our code as an accessory to residential use.
Yeah, let me, let me just say, yeah, John's right. I mean, we, it's really just general zoning regulations that govern accessory structures. We don't have anything specific, to my knowledge, that addresses, uh, residential sport courts.
Yeah, it doesn't define, we don't have a definition that explains how you can use them.
Right, so it's going to be setbacks. Uh, like you said, if you're limited to one accessory type use, then you're limited to one.
Or other permits like, um, you know, electrical code if you're putting up lights and, uh, E and S grading permits if you're doing stuff like that, yeah.
Right, but we're not going to have anything that's going to say it's only for family or not for family or, or anything like that. Uh, at least we don't have anything like that at the moment.
That's back. What John's referring to with the recreational use, there's different definitions of recreation. There's passive and there's active. Passive is permitted in the residential district, active is not. Not to get into, I don't have the definitions in front of me, but active, defined differently than passive, describes things like organized sports events, public picnic areas, things like that. So doesn't draw a very hard line. It's really not intended, I don't think, to address this exact issue. But I think what John's referring to is the fact that passive recreation is permitted use in a residential district. Sport courts are permitted, but to have organized events would not be permitted because that would then be active, which is not permitted in residential. As Steve referred to and John referred to, setbacks, basic things, and all the other ordinance requirements that go into any sort of improvement, whether it's a sports court or not. I just wanted to make the distinction on these, these, I would say loosely defined active versus passive, I think are, are actually, they're, they're written sort of to help prevent a situation like this, though not intended to.
I just wanted to add something additional to, just related to the general issue at large that, um, John had touched on and what, where we were looking for the board's feedback is specifically related to, um, some other issues that have been brought to our attention through these complaints that, um, are not only present at this site but are, um, also present in other areas in the township. And so one of those things is, um, where we may be able to address intensity of use type issues. So what I'm referring to is with these types of sports courts that have other components of them, because we all know and we've seen the temporary volleyball net that goes up for the graduation party that comes down, but then there is something different in there where you start to talk about impervious coverage, perhaps permanent lighting, things like that, that may have an, an impact on the intensity of the use on the property. And so I think the question that staff have for the board is we try to understand what direction you'd like us to move on this, is is that something you want us to look into as potentially drafting some supplemental use regulations that might try to differentiate between your typical accessory use and then something that might be more than that, that we may be able to regulate and provide a little bit more buffer, um, from neighboring properties?
I, I, I think what I'm hearing in discussions that we've had, including this morning's marathon, um, yes, I think that would be helpful to do that. It, it, it allows maybe to be a little bit more precise than it may be right now. It may be a little bit clearer. It may give the ability to enforce stronger and, and also would allow neighbors and homeowners to know more specific details, what's allowed and what's not. And, and maybe that's as far as this thing can go, I don't know. But, but I think being more clear, more precise, um, is, is what our goal is. So to answer your question, yes, and do your best job. And I, again, talking this morning about it for an hour and a half, I know it's, it's a, it's a challenge, but.
Absolutely, go ahead. Absolutely, go ahead. Sure, yeah, yeah.
And, and related to that, if I may, the other thing is that we had provided the board with a sample ordinance from a nearby municipality that had adopted no lawn parking regulations because of a separate issue. But just to provide you with some context of what an ordinance like that might look like if it was regulated in this setting, are you interested in us exploring something like that at this time?
I would be, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so we'll, we'll incorporate that then into something that we'll bring to the board at a future meeting soon. Perhaps not next month, but definitely in the next few short period of time.
Sure. And in the meantime, send out drafts of whatever you can find. Sure, yeah.
Okay, any, any, any comments from you folks? Alright.
100 people. So, I mean,
Right.
If you cut that down, or if they're allowed to put the court in, there's got to be a minimum or, or maximum number of people or something like that. Put a 10.
Sure, sure. That's a thought. Yeah. Okay. Alright, Donna, nobody on Zoom has comments? Okay. Moving on to five with the motion to award and a motion to advertise, John Neal?
Okay, we have two trucks that we're asking for approval to place on municipal bid. One is a 2012 F-550 dump truck, the other is a 2009 F-750 dump truck.
John, did you, did you notice that as soon as you got up to talk about a dump truck, the place cleared out?
That's good. You should have me on early. I should be like right in the middle.
I don't know, I mean. Yeah, we're going to put you up front.
That's fine.
We owe you, we owe you.
Right in the middle of public hearings, I'll have something, you know.
John, how many miles does the 2012 have?
Ah, the 2012, these trucks are all on years because of salt. They're very low mileage. It's in the mid 30s. So, that they are.
Are they diesel?
They're all diesel, yes.
Pre-emission stuff?
These are, both of these are pre-emission, no def.
Just the bodies routed out?
It's not routed out too bad, but it's at the point where it's not just body, it's electronics and everything else. It, the salt kills things.
Peter, anybody can sign up for municipal?
Yep, municipal bids open.
I'm not saying I want to buy it, but diesel trucks are very expensive now, and those old ones tend to run for a long time, especially if they're at that low mileage.
Yeah, it depends on what you're going to do with it, but they're solid trucks for a contractor, but we don't want the expense that's going to come real soon.
I, I understand.
Peter, I think, would you like to make a motion? Right up your alley.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, to put on municipal bid, to approve the sell, sale of truck 322, 2012 F-550 dump truck, and truck number 302, 2009 F-750 dump truck.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Get her done. Chris?
I have. I have a, I'm looking for approval to sell a Dodge Charger. It's number 2018, 42-19. Roughly 100,000 miles, and it's not diesel.
Just starting to develop problems, repair maintenance, or it's just the age you let it go?
Yeah, we just pretty much, once they get 100,000, we're we can't risk something happening catastrophic.
Chris, I think, I think we got to start buying Toyotas. I mean, those, those.
I buy Toyotas.
Those engines, those engines will run to 250 miles, 250,000 miles.
I just sold one in December at 280,000 miles.
No kidding?
Really?
Yes.
I mean, these Dodge Chargers were loaded at 100,000. I mean, you should consider it. But anyway, that's for another time in discussion.
Yeah, when you're talking police vehicles, you really have to make sure everything's relatively new and up to date and.
Do they actually have Toyota police cars?
Probably, but I don't know.
Okay, alright. Right, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve to sell the Dodge Charger 20, 2018 model.
Peter, second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got us at a good night. Okay, John, you're up again.
Okay, the next item, we had our bid opening for the 2024-25 diesel and heating oil bid. The low bidder, who was the only bidder, was Rhodes Energy, who's been our supplier for the last three years. Prices came in about a dollar a gallon lower than last year for diesel and heating oil. Yeah. Yeah, prices are really dropping right now. So, we were right at the right time. We're happy with that.
Oil just hit an all-time 12, 52-week low today, so I would assume that's impacting what you're doing.
Yeah, we opened bids last week, so we're right there.
Good timing.
Yep.
Okay. Would you like to make a motion?
I'd love to make a motion to award the 2024-2025 diesel and heating oil bid to Rhodes Energy.
Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item, we had our bid opening for the 401 Traffic Signal Project. We have to reject all the bids. We had a problem with the language in the PennDOT pre-qualification. Ran it past Bernadette, and it was in our best interest to reject the bids and rebid. So, we're asking two separate things. One, to reject the bids that we received on the fourth, and then also to approve to re-advertise. So we'll have it at the next meeting, though.
Yeah, okay, motion to reject the bids for 401, Route 401 Traffic Signal Project and approve to re-advertise with different language.
It's already been correct.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
It passes.
John, will this fix Mill Lane and 401?
Yes, it's the whole, from Mill up to Phoenix Road Pike.
That light drives me insane.
And speaking of that, just, just if anyone's listening out there catches it, realize that the Route 29 Sinkhole Project by PennDOT is going to be starting soon. So, look on our website for, for start dates and, and information, but it, it's going to run for six to eight, six to eight months, so be aware of that. Planning and Development, Zach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item here is consideration of an extension of time, which is rendered decision on the Bishop II redevelopment plan, is the final land development plan. The applicant, yesterday evening, I guess you'd say, offered an extension that would carry the plan through January 31st of 2025. As I understand it, they've been in ongoing conversations with DEP. I'm not privy to the details of that discussion, but it does sound like there's been some level of interaction and coordination, which I think is a positive. But to the specifics, I could not speak. So what's before the board is just consideration of that extension, of accepting that extension.
Donna, do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the extension of the Bishop II redevelopment, final land development plan until January 31st, 2025.
Can I second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
It passes. And 6B, please?
Yes, sir. Consider release of financial security for the Old Orchard Mobile Home Park. A few years ago, they added a few new structures in there. The, the project's been complete for some time. We had been retaining some funds for landscaping, which has since been completed and inspected. Therefore, Arrow is recommending release of the remaining funds held by letter of credit.
I'll make a motion to release the financial security for tax parcel LD-13-2018 for Old Orchard Mobile Home Park in the amount of $10,000.
Can I second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. John Matea, you're back up in the batter's box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the month, our next meeting is on the 23rd. Two applications we have before the zoning hearing board, the one, of course, we spoke to at length tonight, until we get a letter of if they're going to appear or ask for a continuance will be the application of Penncarre's Properties, 370 Lancaster Avenue. Second application is a residential application of 24 Flintshire Road. Their application is for variance to Section 200, Attachment 2 of the zoning code of East Whiteland, to allow the construction of an accessory use, private garage, that will exceed the height limitation of 16 feet or 1.5 stories. On this application, in case the board has any questions, I do have plans, Zach has plans on his computer. The application actually is not a variance from the height regulation, because the definition that we define height is between the lowest level and highest level of a roof. So with the roof being at a maximum of 18 feet, the mean height is only actually going to be about 14 feet, 11 inches. But however, the residents plan on building a second story onto it. They're going to raise the dormers on it to allow for storage. And as part of their application, they literally in there say storage for the growing family, and they're not going to put any kind of plumbing or other provisions on there other than lights for security and safety. It's going to be replacing a shed that's on the lot. It's accessory use structures that allow this close to 10 feet to the property line, which the existing one now, they said, is about 11 feet. And so basically, they want to replace the shed with a garage and put a second story on it.
I don't see a reason to send this to the sir.
And then to be, and to be clear and transparent, that is my neighborhood, that is my street. It's four or five houses from my house. But just talking with Bernadette, there's not any issues. From my standpoint, as long as they're not going to put in plumbing and, and use it for an accessory apartment, I don't, I don't have a problem, and I can.
And on behalf of the town.
I'm with Rich. I don't have an issue with the.
On behalf of the township, Mr. Chairman, I'll make sure that that gets put as a part of the condition of the decision if they so for, if they find to grant the, grant the request.
Agreed, I have no opposition.
On updates, we've already run over a few that staff and I are working on. One of the things we wanted to bring up is, it's the season, of course, for political signage. Want to put out a reminder there for people who want to display their, their signs that can't be placed on public property, property, except at polling places on election days. Political signs aren't permitted to be bigger than eight squi, eight feet square, eight square feet in total area per property. We request that the code also asks that signs be placed out no earlier than 30 days prior to the election and removed within two days after the election. As part of the process this year, the township is going to set up a site to collect any, to recycle election signs after it's over. It'll be labeled and be placed on the driveway, actually. As you come into the township building, there's a little side road near the police, fire department's access driveway. They'll put a bin down there, and it'll be an access point for residents to drop off their election signs.
Okay, very good.
That'll really streamline, streamline this polling place afterwards. Just walk the signs right to the bin.
Thanks, John. And I should say, any other questions, any concerns? Hearing none, moving on to public comment. Would you like to come forward, Dave? Do you have a public comment? Seeing none in the audience? Donna, anything there? Okay, moving on then to the consent agenda. We're at the top of the stretch, guys, so I'll read the items. Any questions following, we can address specifically. Prove the meeting minutes from August 14, 2024. Ratify the payment of the bills for August in the amount of $512,595.28. Treasury report dated July 31st, 2024. And finally, ratify approval of hiring dandelions in the amount of $5,300 for software, which is $442 more per month than quoted. Than quoted originally. Any questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is read.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And this meeting is adjourned at nine 39. Thank you.